I'd like to begin, uh, welcome in all of you that are here. I'd like to ask your indulgence, we do have our remote sites that are hooked up. I'm going to ask, uh, the death room staff, please ask our members to be as quiet as they can in names in the other locations being able to hear what's being said in names us and being able to hear what's being said at the other locations. I'd like to recognize the House and Senate Sergeant Arms that we have located throughout the state and thank them. We want to recognize the Sergeant Arms, the members that are present at Raleigh. We're going to go to each remote site as a test and ask the presiding chair at each remote site, please introduce the members and Sergeant Arms that are at your side with. So with that, in Raleigh, for the House Sergeant Arms, that's Paul Shepard, Richard Beagles, Morgan Lee, Terry McCall, Thomas Terry. For the Senate, we have Larry Hancock, Charles Mazzales, Becky Meyer. And also would point out that our core reporters here, um, Bobby Worley. For Raleigh, we appreciate her continued dedicated service. Again, I welcome her here and wanted to just public here on the District Team, I am representing the day of the list, the Chairman of the House Committee on the District Team. With me today, our Chairman Senator Ralph Heiss of the Senate Re-Addition Committee, and also Chairman Representative Nelson Pollard of the House Committee. With me in Raleigh are Representatives Jackson Dixon, Farmer Butterfield, Jackson, Gil, Range, Davis, Howard, Hunter, Hurley, Bishaw, Malone, Lookingham, Ray, and also Senators Blue, Lee, Newton, Aron, Gunn, and McKissell. At the Raleigh side, did I miss any member of the committee? Chairman would also point out that there are several members who are here who will not wish us up, because we certainly welcome them and thank those for their attendance. We're going to go now to vote for Community College. To vote for Community College, I'd like for the Chair to introduce himself and the members that are there within this call.
Hi, my name's, uh, Harry Brown. I'm in the Senate. I represent District Six, which is Onslow and Jones County. Mike Spesial in the House. Mike Rep-- Spesial, sorry, none of us get it right. Mike, you represent, uh, Botha and, uh, Craven in Pampico County. And then Doran Sanderson, who's in the Senate, he represents District Three, Two, which is Carrack, Craven, and Pampico County. Our Sergeant Arms, uh, on the House side is Bill Bass, Jim, uh, Moore, and Jim Hamilton from the Senate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Next, we'd like to go to Halifax Community College. The Chairman of Halifax Community College, um, recognize themselves in the, of course, that.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Representative John Bell, Halifax Community College. Uh, with us today Sergeant Arms, um, from the House, Bill Moore and Doug Harris. Sergeant Arms from the Senate, Tom Burrows and Francis Peterson. Uh, we also have in attendance, uh, Representative Bobby Richardson and staff from Senator Angela Blines, Brian's office. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative Bell. We now like to test and introduce our Facebook site, uh, Community College, uh, Community College, I guess. The Chairman there, if you can, if you can.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Representative, um, so, have a show. Let's try to get him.
Is this better?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Representative John Segal. Um, the co-chair here is Senator Brent Jackson. Representative Senate Tenants are Representative Billy Richardson, Representative Floyd, Representative Lucas, and Representative Pierce. Our House Sergeant Arms are Jonas Cherry, David Lightman. And our Senate Sergeant Arms are Charles Jefferies and Terry Edmondson. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go now to the Guilford County Community College, our side of Guilford County. If the Chairman there could identify themselves and the members.
Hi. Where you at, David? Are you in here yet?
Yes, ma'am, would you hear me?
This is Representative Sarah Stevens, our Chair of the Committee of All, Senator Freddie Wayne. Our Sergeant Arms from the House side are Warren Hawkins, Noah, Tom McCullough. And, um, we have Hal Roach from the Senate. In addition, we have two other members present. We have Representative Evelyn Carey and Senator Gladys Robinson. Did I leave anyone out? We're, we're good.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll now go to Central Amont Community College in Charlotte. If the Presiding Chairman could sign and introduce himself or herself that is present.
Good evening, Chairman Lewis. Uh, John Corbett, President of North Carolina House District, with us tonight is Senator Waddell, Representative Dewan, Secretary, Secretary, Senator Bishop, Representative Cunningham, Representative Cardy, Representative Belt, and Representative Pickett. Our Sergeant Arms from the House side, Joe Brooke, Russell Salisbury. For the Senate, Linda Matt is Billy Fisher, the way to go.
Thank you, Senator Corbett. And, um, Callwell Community College, will you sign in the Callwell Community College?
Thank you. I'm Senator Warren Daniel. With me from the legislative delegation, I am Representative Jonathan Jordan from Target County, Representative a few Black ones from Burke County, and Representative Destin Hall from Caldwell County. Sergeants at Arms, if you would raise your hands, um, there's from the House, Bill Riley, Bear Moore, Terry Barnhart, and John Enlow. And we also have Officer King from the General Assembly Police in Raleigh.
Chairman, we welcome you all. Ladies and gentlemen, today's hearing is the effort on the part of the two committees to hear both the comments on the proposed 2017 House and Senate plans to comply with the Court's order in Covington or State North Carolina. Besides this location here in Raleigh, in 643 Legislative Office, we have identified and recognized six satellite locations. They are Central Amont Community College in Charlotte, Vethel Technical Community College Fayetteville, Callwell Community College in Hudson, Guilford Technical Community College in Jamestown, the Halifax Community College in Boulder, and Botha Community College in Milwaukee, Washington. I'd like to remind members of the public that we are also accepting comment online at the General Assembly website and via physical email, as well as anyone, uh, we are accepting comment in those forums if there's someone who'd like to offer input or was not able to be here today. Members of the committee do have and will have the ability to review and view these submitted written comments. Now that the introductions and the Senate checks are out of the way, I'd like to thank the members of the public for being here today and for participating in the democratic process. As you may be aware, the General Assembly has a deadline. I've sent him the first for approving the districts. The committee released maps at the weekend for review. Those maps are online. I'm also told that there are hard copies at each site. Our hearing tonight is so that we can hear from you and your input on the districts themselves. You should have noticed an opportunity to sign up with the Sergeant Arms as you walk into room. The Chair will also pause and point out that there are members of the public that are in Room 544, which is also the Legislative Office, if you're able to hear what is being said in here. Many of those have signed up to speak, and we certainly have staff who are named back and forth to go over and be in this room when it's their turn to speak. Each speaker, if recognized, will have three minutes to speak. The Sergeant at Arms will have a yellow card that he will flash when your three minutes are nearing a close. He will, he or she will look up a red card when your time has expired. You may comment on whatever aspects of the map you would like to. This is a free country and this is an open hearing. It is helpful if your comments focus on the maps that have been presented or alternative ideas you have for complying with the Court order. I want to emphasize that the committee has adopted criteria after its first meeting, and that criteria has been public for weeks now. Those criteria are equal population, continuity, aligned by the mandatory accounting group needs, trying to keep towns, cities, precincts totally possible, incumbency protection, consideration of election data, and drawing districts without regards to race or ethnicity. What we'd like to hear from the public specifically is how to better meet our rules that apply to those criteria. Addressing comments towards a specific House or Senate district and referencing a specific criteria that could be better met would help this community in its work. Reading off prepared, top emails or sent before emails is also an accepted way to go on record. However, those comments stray from the objective of the day, which is to comply with the Court order to read all the maps. They may not be the most constructive help. You are, of course, free to do so anyway. With that... So with that, we're going to move now to, uh, I'd like to, uh, recognize, uh, Senator Heiss, the Chairman of the Senate, the, 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 the.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a moment to clear up any confusion. Uh, we do have, uh, one of the interest groups in the state have been sending out information today, uh, that there were public hearings today and tomorrow on the recent sites for tomorrow's hearing. Uh, today is the only hearings for this committee, only public hearings for this committee there, and I just wanted to make sure to clarify, uh, about the confusion.
What we're going to do, in there for the try to facilitate moving around and getting as many people to speak, um, in as timely a fashion as possible, we're going to start in Raleigh, and then we're going to go to Jamestown. And then to Callwell, based on this, I have, in Raleigh, and the Chair will apologize if there are names that are mispronounced. The Chair would ask, when you speak, if you would please pronounce your names so that the Court will record it. The Chair is going to call three names at a time in Raleigh, and then move to the next locate, location where we will take two at that locate, location. So the first three in Raleigh, the Chair, he apologizes for any mispronunciations, uh, Chalona Reynolds or Reynolds, apologize for the handwriting. Uh, Eva F. Lee and Julie Tongkoder. If you will please approach the microphone in the rear, uh, we see our Sergeant Arms is standing there. He will, uh, help you speak. We can turn the camera now for the Chair, who would, uh, and to prepare, uh, in Jamestown, the first two are Janice Seager and Alan Meggins. So the Chair, uh, there. But again, uh, Chalona Reynolds or Reynolds, apologize for the mispronounced name. Uh, we welcome you, and you have, you, please state your name, and then we have three minutes.
My name is Eva F. Lee. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to bring in a couple of satellite patients on live stream. I come to you today as a mom, a Raleigh resident who lives on March 1st of this year, head on, went up to the Carport Way at West Monmouth Hills School in Strickland. A school that has been passed over or rebuilt many times. A school where my sons are a teacher, has a budget of about $300 for 150 students and 150 school days. A school of a building that occasionally smells like swamp gas when it is hot. The Carport Way is a new off Strickland if the school was rebuilt. The North Carolina General Assembly controls our state, made me greatly disheartened, even embarrassed, by labeling North Carolina as no longer a democracy. Politicians should not select their voters. He used the same consultant whose work was well-known and ruled unconstitutional. How is this different? This committee is reflective of the supermajority created by the gerrymandering. It feels of a sham. I think it is time, clear view of Charlottesville, to call this process what it is, and those like computerized apartheid. You do not want to be remembered as the folks who did their best Jimmy Crowe impersonation to disenfranchise minorities and continue to disenfranchise with judicial gerrymandering. Do not give the label of racists to your children. This committee, or rather the supermajority control, listens to hearts and souls of the generations who fought for liberty and justice for all and not be remembered as the opinion Don't act like Nazis. I'm Jewish, I can say that. So, Jerry Mandar, now, let me be clear, gerrymandering is white supremacy. We deserve reparations for the last seven years of the nation. Give us automatic voter registration at age 18 as a reparation. We deserve reparations for the past seven years, thank you.
Just to let y'all know, Bobby's in the phone, okay?
As the next speaker is coming up, uh, we, 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 the Chair, Chair would again remind the people, uh, the members and the people that are present to be quiet so that the comments can't be heard. Uh, do you please state your name and you got a presence?
Uh, hi. My name is Julie, it's Tom Smith. And, uh, we just want to ask for a little bit more details, so I didn't clarify specifically the line of comments are going to beam out the value of balance and what it deserves. If competition is good for business and for consumers, then it should equally be good for government or citizens. Jerry Mandar is for some of North Carolina's citizens of all political straits, because they stack the decks so heavily in favor of one party or another, that there is no true competition of ideas, values, and candidates for general election. This, which is the real competition to primaries, where candidates are encouraged and more and more extreme in order to address smaller, more low voters. As we all know, extremists can certainly win elections, they just don't govern them. For example, a small group of extremists can, they can hijack the leadership, they make ridiculous things, like if you split bathroom, as well as serious things like discrimination and. I vote for balanced competitive districts that produce the best government, and I hope that you will also vote for balanced competitive districts as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chalona Reynolds, Reynolds here. Not seeing that person, the Chair would like to enter for the record. Chair was handed, um, public comment on the weekly, the issue to poor messages shared. This is produced and handled by, uh, Democracy North Carolina. I know the Chair knows maybe this is part of the permanent record of this community, um, and copies will be allowed to all of the members. Now we're going to go to the Jamestown side.
Chair, can you hear us?
We can.
Okay, it's Representative Seager. I just wanted to let you know, we had three more legislative members to join us. Senator Love, I believe he's going to go to the beginning for a moment. We have Representative Crazy Harrison and Representative Cecil Rock. We want to let you know that we are ready for our other speakers.
I'm Janice Seager, a voter in Guilford County since 2006. What's the cost of gerrymandering? The cost to so many of us of lack of representation in Raleigh. My representatives and Senators do not listen to me, because they don't have to. They listen only to those who vote for them and to their big money donors. They do not represent my positions. My vote does not count in my district, because it is structured to keep the current party in power. What is the cost of gerrymandering? The cost of laws passed that benefits so few? Laws that hurt our state in the long run? Laws that damage our environment? Laws that limit public education? Laws that limit full access to the polls? Laws that transfer control of local government from the people to Raleigh? Laws that limit access to health care for thousands of North Carolinians? They pass these laws because they can, because they have gerrymandered safe districts that guarantee their power in Raleigh. What is the cost of gerrymandering? The cost of defending the unconstitutional districts and the unconstitutional laws that the General Assembly has passed? It is our tax dollars that pay the attorneys. Our tax dollars that can be better spent on something else, that should be spent on anything else that would benefit the people of North Carolina. We do not see that the current process and the current maps hold any promise to be any different from the past. We are tired of paying for gerrymandering.
Good day. My name is Alan Meggins. I live in Winston-Salem, and I'd first like to thank you for holding these hearings regarding the creation of fair bipartisan election maps for our state and for all of the citizens that have come out today to voice their concerns. Thank you as well. My biggest fear, quite frankly, is that the comments made here today and from across the state will follow with deaf ears, and the citizens of this great state will once again go unheard. I'm here today because the issue of fair voting maps is one that concerns me as a citizen. This issue concerns me not for my own individualized impact, but for the thousands of North Carolina citizens whose voices are muted from rigged and unfair elections. I look at these promote, proposed maps, and I see little to no changes in the way they rigged the system from one side. I see no bipartisan effort to create fair maps that hear the voices of each and every citizen in this state. Instead, I see districts like my own that are whittled out with small slivers of the community set aside for the minority party, as if this somehow creates the illusion that these maps are fair. There are many solutions to this issue that would revolve in fair elections in this state. I've heard suggestions of district, district being by zip code. I've heard of district being by county, population setting the number of Representatives and Senators. In fact, most of the suggestions I have heard have been far more plausible and fair than what you have presented to the citizens as your fix. I use that unintentionally, as all you have done with these maps is continue to fix the Clearly, these maps represent the level of concern our Assembly members have for their constituents. This is not myth, this is fact. Across the state, our citizens are dealing with issues where solutions have either been discarded or being ignored, and this is because it doesn't fit the agenda. This needs to stop. If you want to be an Assembly member and represent the people of this state in a manner that is beneficial for all citizens, if you cannot or will not do so, then it's time to get out of the way to allow someone else to create fair election maps so that you might be released of your burden. In closing, our state's motto is esse fungo daria, to be rather than to seem. However, the current state of affairs in the General Assembly, perhaps along with new maps we adopted in the model, liver populace free, for this, democracy law. Thank you.
We're now going to the Callwell side and the Raleigh, uh, or Washington side. I'd like to react to this one, if we do three from each side. So the Chairman to carry, we're going to do three from each side. We're going to do Callwell, we do Todd Scott, Deborah Moore, and Pastor Keith or Keats, and then we're going to go to Washington, we're going to do Rayner James, How James, and Carl Dispen. So we're going to the Callwell side next.
My name is Todd Scott. I'm the first Vice President of Slayfield, NAACP branch. Um, in August 2016, a three-judge panel ruled that 28 of 170 North Carolina houses in addition to drawing a second grant to weaken the power of the African-American voters. They were illegal racial gerrymanders. Republican lawmakers appealed to the U.S. Supreme Court, but it agreed with the panel. August the first, 2017, that panel gave legislators a new deadline. In fact, moved district, redrawn district maps to the judges by September 1st on the use of 2018 representative elects. This is all a shame. All these maps we got is a shame. It's like on a stool, on the first day of school, and you're too tired to, to have the end of the year test today. Any discussion? Legislative leaders continue to stall and avoid fixing their unconstitutional maps. Fellow judges have argued them for not taking it seriously. Urgency of correcting their illegal maps, public law may say they are serious, but they have. Hire the same consultant, Thomas Hoefler, who drew the current illegal maps. He is nationally known for ripping maps to help his Republican clients. Declared that he, that they will not consider the race of the voters, that that would stop them from drawing biased maps. In fact, that approach annoys the director of the court, to the example, where the black voters have a fine chance to elect candidates of their choice in their district. They have declared they will consider past election outcomes and the ability of their party to win elections in the district. That meant they would draw districts for parties that are famous. They have refused to refuse, reveal the new map that Hoefler has already drawn, which would give North Carolinians time to provide informed input during further hearings. We should have been in a bigger hearing than we got today, but who found out about this? They didn't want everybody to know about it. How can a public choice legislative elected from illegal districts to draw firm maps, especially when they use the same mapmaker and highly partisan goers? North Carolina lawmakers have used unlawful gerrymandering to win elections in 2012, 2014, and 2016, then passed Congress law in the central illegitimate General Assembly. Illegal maps have protected legislative leaders from being held accountable by voters. About 90% of the state legislative leaders now have safe seats with no illegal policy competition. General Assembly, General Assembly leaders have spent $4.8 million of taxpayer money to defend their maps at court, and they got beat every time. I'd like to leave this to all our legislators. Matthew 25:40. The king will reply, truly, I tell you, whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me.
My name is Summer Boy. I live in Slayfield, NAACP. North Carolinas remain mad, um, North Carolinas are tired of gerrymandering, and politicians are frightened.
Can we get a mic for the Speaker? This is ridiculous. Get her a mic, we can hear.
A new poll shows that four out of five North Carolinians vote 8% for the same thing, not pay for politicians to draw their own additional votes. That includes 85%. That includes 85% of the Maricots State Democrats. 74% of Republicans, 80% of independents, as well as 30% of blacks and whites. And 80% of African-Americans.
Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore, we're going to add, and we don't have any to your time. If you could, please sit a little bit closer to the mic, perhaps a little bit slower.
Yes, I may put one in front of you to increase the clarity, okay?
The redistricting process must be open. Avoid racism and partisan gerrymandering allows voters to pick their own representative representatives, not the other way around. We should research practice using other states and adopt principles that encourage deep community involvement. Fair redistricting should follow these basic principles. Race is the key. Maps draws must ensure that it is possible for black voters to elect their own candidates of choice as required by Voting Act rights. One person, one vote must be equal population in obey of laws. Map draws must create compatible districts without our districts must be not be sealed and joined into one and joined into one point. No parallelism. Maps must draw and use as best and current lawmakers. Voting histories or voters of the dollar must have respect communities of interest. Map draws must avoid dividing communities of similar culture, ethnic, and local government districts. Respect boundaries. Maps must show effort to keep the counties whole. Before it is approved, a map must equal and override basis. Moving to recognize that court measures of fairness.
Can we mute the other sounds while we're speaking? Yeah. We got sound here that our side, our side, we can't help but search for our side's attention. Where are the sound waves? This is much the one that we're seeing.
We do not bring any equipment with us. Equipment is provided for us. Apologize for any inconvenience, but this is the best that we have in this moment.
I love and appreciate that you're in Boston. I'm very grateful. I'm a live one with us in Caldwell, Nashville, and St. Louis, and I'm watching a lot. I'll be very brief about this. Now, any city limits were taken into account. Now, anytime you buy a city limit, you're going to have two different state senators representing you. This city is collecting taxes. The state's collecting taxes and the county's collecting taxes. Anytime you separate a city group from, they're divided. You've done the same exact thing as moving an unwanted relative into your house to share a room because you're going to have to come to a consensus on all these different issues. That brings me all I got to say, but anytime you divide a city limit or encroak down a city limit to meet your quota, that's where the problem can be. But it is not fair for residents to live in a municipality anywhere and have you voting for this district on one side and this district on the other and pay taxes to that city and that county. It all needs to be, all municipalities need to be under one city. That's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Is it possible to go from the Washington side now?
This is, is this the Washington side? The chairman there, please recognize Rayner James, Howe James, and Carl Nishka.
Rayner James and Howe James, and then Carl.
I'm Rayner James. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm a Republican. I come from a conservative background, but do expect total approval. I too, although I'm a constitutional conservative... Speaking of this?
You may. You're fine, you're fine. You're fine.
Although I'm a constitutional conservative, I too dislike having communities divided between city, county, whatever. I think we should be able to draw hotter to people on the ticket. There is another concern I have that is much stronger than that. Yes, Republicans do have control. The Republican platform is very, very well aligned, to my thought, actually. However, there is only a small percentage of people in the legislature, ladies and gentlemen, who truly adhere to that platform. Some of those are being put into districts that are not applicable to them. And that is an absolute tragedy. Larry Pittman, Paberas County is one of those examples. Paberas County will bear three different districts in particular. We will be with another conservative Republican. There is someone who's less conservative right next door, one of the conservatives. This is not good. There are Republicans all around the state that are writing resolutions that they will not support Republicans just because they have an argument. If that Republican does not report to support the Republican platform, please don't make this state where we're here to be headed. Please take the right with action and make this right.
I'm Howe James. I live in Trailblazer County, Craigville County. I belong to the Coastal Carolina Taxpayers Association, an organization that advocates minimum government and maximum freedom, preservation of free enterprise in the United States Constitution. We have two champions of our cause in the General Assembly. The districts are reorganized by these new district maps in such a way as to separate them from their base supporters. Here's Senator Cook as District 1, Representative Pittman as District 82 and then part of 83, I'm not sure. Both of these gentlemen have been very supportive of our cause. I selected five bills that have been considered by the present legislature to help determine the support of our cause by the members of the General Assembly. They are, one, the Oliveris Gun Bill, House Bill 746. Two, the National, to North Carolina Constitutional Regulation to Seal Weapons, H.P. 145. The actual Get Bit Common Torque Bill, H.P. 417. The bill to exempt ocular surgery from the certificate of need Bill, H.P. 344. And the Marine Fisheries Regulation Bill, H.P. 867. That wasn't a random selection. At the beginning of the session, those were the issues that we wanted addressed by this assembly. Due to constraints imposed by the Senate leadership, Senator Cook has not been able to vote on any of these bills, but he's tried hard. Representative Pittman has been a primary sponsor on three of the four bills and the fifth bill, Marine Fisheries Regulation, we do not want passed. Representative Pittman has strongly supported our position. Please reject these proposed district maps until these deficiencies are corrected. Thank you.
My name is Carl Nishka. I'm the chairman of the Third District GOP. Me, a past chairman of the Grand County GOP. I'd like to defer my time to my vice chair. Is that possible? Who was on your list to appoint that will never get to him, and he has some very constructive redistricting comments to make? If I pass the...
Mr. Moore.
Carl, I think we will get to him eventually. We're going to go through this whole list, so...
If you're going to do that? Thank you.
We're going to now go to the Charlotte side and the first three speakers, Jacob Hunt, Sarah Feldman, and Henry Martin. Look at the Charlotte side. Recognize the three speakers, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jacob Hunt, resident of Landville, North Carolina. I must admit that I am not adept at the complex demographics of our state to know whether the new districts are gerrymandered or not. Perhaps, perhaps if it fixes the racial gerrymandering, but if so, that is a victory indeed. But seeing that it was made primarily by one political party, I'm still skeptical of its pervasion. So I'm here to call upon the General Assembly of North Carolina to end political gerrymandering, which undermines our democracy. After the election in 2016, Governor Cooper narrowly won by just .2%. Now, in a politically blind system, this would naturally be coupled with a near 50-50 split among the parties in the General Assembly. Yet Republicans hold a two-thirds majority in both chambers. Clearly, something is awry. I recognize that political gerrymandering is not illegal, but that does not mean it's right. The process greatly diminishes the voice of the people and undermines our will. I am generally annoyed when the government is compared to a business because they serve two wholly different purposes. However, there are some similarities. When a business has an inferior or unpopular product, the consumers can reject it. It is now up to the business to improve the product, get the consumers what they want, or face the effects of the free market. When voting districts are designed by the legislators, they do not have to face the consequences of unpopular policy. This, of course, leads them to pursue policy that serves not the collective good, but rather the good of the few. I understand that when the Democrats controlled the General Assembly, they too drew districts along politically favorable lines. But how many times must we repeat this same mistake? How hyper partisan must we become before this cycle is finally broken? So again, on the general, I call upon the General Assembly to uphold democracy and allow voters to choose their policymakers, not allow policymakers to choose their voters. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Feldman. I'm from Charlotte. I'm a proud 2014 graduate of Providence High. Go Panthers! And I'm here tonight to talk about racial and partisan gerrymandering. As we all know, the court declared many of our legislative districts unconstitutional racial gerrymandering. Now, you, members of the Joint Redistricting Committee, are tasked with remedying this violation of the Constitution. But what do good districts look like? First of all, good districts must follow the court directive to consider race to ensure that minority voters have a fair chance to elect candidates of their choice. In the court case, the state actually argued that it considered race in the 2011 redistricting process to comply with the Voting Rights Act that mandates that minority voters should have this opportunity. However, the state could not prove that it used race for such benevolent reasons, and instead, the court ruled that the use of race unconstitutionally violated minority voters' rights. Fortunately, this is your opportunity to make amends and truly empower minority voices. So, how are you doing? Well, the other day, Representative Lewis tweeted that race was not considered in the drawing of the new proposed maps. But not considering race is not enough. The court was very clear that race should be considered in the drawing of legislative maps, but that it should be used to empower minority voters, not silence their voices by shoving them into as few districts as possible. But empowering minority voters to have the opportunity to elect candidates goes beyond a just consideration of race. In a state like North Carolina where race, where voting is racially polarized and where, as you are well aware, upwards of 90% of black voters consistently support Democrats, only a legislative map drawn without partisan bias can be an appropriate remedy to an unconstitutional racial gerrymander. But instead, as Representative Lewis has admitted, and as newly released voting data show, these maps were drawn with an aim to cement the Republican majority in Raleigh, even if Democrats overwhelmingly win the popular vote. The problem is that in North Carolina, partisanship is racism. Partisan bias in districting prevents minority voters and those that agree with them from having their voices heard in Raleigh in proportion to their vote share. Concentrating Democrats, often synonymous with minorities, into a small number of districts is wrong, whether it's for Republicans' advantage, whites' advantage, or both. And with that, I urge you, members of the Redistricting Committee, to do the right thing by creating new maps that ensure that minority voices are heard in Raleigh and that let voters choose their politicians without stacking the deck against one political party before a single ballot is cast.
I believe we had one more in Charlotte.
If you look on your map and look at the southwest up to Pineville, down to Pineville, up to Huntersville, Corneas, that's my district. My name's Henry Martinet, and I'm a taxpayer in Mecklenburg County. I pay a dag gun, a lot of taxes, and I'm a property owner, and I have to drive up 77 all the time. And it's really, it takes about an hour and a half, two hours.
Mr. Martin, if you could pass this thing to the microphone.
I'm sorry. Davidson, Huntersville, Corneas, Pineville, and Charlotte, okay? So how does this, how does this one senator represent all these distinct municipalities, you know, faithfully and effectively? It's my, it's my, I'm saying that any senator, Democrat or Republican, can't effectively represent the way, this district, the way it's grown. So it's going to be a problem for whoever has to represent this particular district. And I think it should be redrawn, is all I can say.
Thank you. We're going to now move to the Fayetteville location. And under Fayetteville, well, Fayetteville, Bobby Hart, Shaprock, Cherokee, Rock Hall, and Minister. Apologize, it wrong me, I believe is the last name, so Representative Somer, Senator Jackson.
My name is Bobby Chapper. I'm, and I am a citizen. I'm a citizen of the United States, and I wasn't planning on coming here today. I've been, I watch the political arena on TV, on, in the paper and stuff. But today, when I saw this map of existing North Carolina senate district, it reminded me of when my little kids were small and they were coloring. And I would look and I'd say, "You're coloring out of the line." This map was certainly colored out of the line. And, and the proposed district is not a whole lot better. But I just have one thing to say, that God said that a house divided could not stand. And it seems like we are getting more divided as the days go by. And it's, to me, my... And it's, to me, my answer is, is greed. It's not wanting to have the fellow person that's less privileged than you are. I built my life on helping people that's less fortunate than I am. And I guarantee you, people that don't do that is missing a blessing. I just wanted to see, the ones that drew these maps, if you needed any help, I'd be glad to help. Because I think I can do a better job, and I will have the people at heart and not my next run to see if I'm gonna be re-elected. And you know, that aggravates me, when our politicians is always saying, "I can't do this because, oh, no, I can't do that because I might not get elected next year." Well, who do you think you're up there for yourself? You're up there for us. You're working for us. And, and we expect you to work for everybody's benefit, not for just Republicans or Democrats. I never liked that anyway. I like people to work to get the good of everybody. And I hope that y'all would do better next time. Thank you.
My name is Jerry Reinhold, 516 Deer Path Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I support the House redistricting plan for Cumberland County, my county of residence, for the following reasons. First, the number of split VTDs between two or more districts in Cumberland County under the current 2011 plan will be reduced from 31 of the 77 precincts to six of the 77 precincts with the proposed plan. The plan confines the splits between only two House districts, while the current plan includes several VTDs split between three House districts. The boundaries of House District 43, my district, is tightened up considerably to look more like an ink spot rather than ink splatters. I believe the benefit of these changes to Cumberland County will result in the following. First, fewer ballot types may be, reduce the cost of elections. Secondly, it will reduce opportunities for poll workers to make errors in selecting the current ballot. It should result in fewer spoiled ballots and more accurate contest results with more voters using the correct ballot type. Next, it may provide better constituent representatives with tighter voting district boundaries. And finally, it will benefit candidates for House of Representatives by reducing the number of precincts and perhaps enticing additional citizens to run for elections. Because it will also reduce then the cost of campaigning, a competitive campaign, and with a fewer number of precincts, it will enable better get-out-to-vote campaigns in terms of knocking on doors and doing other things. Thank you.
With the name of God, the beneficent mercifully, the all-wise, true and living God, I give you all the greetings of Isamaa Lee, which is heard around the world. That's my introduction when I go to the North Carolina State Legislature for the past 35 years, with deans from Fayetteville State University, to see my team, which is Marvin Lucas and the Legislative Black Caucus. I've been going before Marvin Lucas went up there. Greetings, everyone. Fayetteville has a solution for the rest of the country. We must realize who we are. The other lady before, like myself, we see Fayetteville as a shining light on a hill. Others see it differently. Now, God says in Scripture, "The devil's strategy is secretive meetings." Secretive meetings. The secret meeting that took place last weekend, I saw Angela from the Legislative Black Caucus on television, and she was jumping up and down as a spokesperson for the Legislative Black Caucus, "Where are the maps? They should have given those maps to her and the Legislative Black Caucus and the rest of the Democrats, especially." Last Friday. Now, here, we are in Fayetteville. We have great growth and development. We have the baseball stadium coming. We have Fort Bragg, the largest military base in the world, and the Second Pentagon in the world. No Jones and office in any other place in America except Washington DC Pentagon. Part of my work includes that. Now, in terms of where do we go from here, let's look at the history. The Fayette Observer used to have a monument on the front of the paper, a picture of the market house or the slave house. As part of my work with Clinton Harris, a lot of y'all know him around the state, we forced the Fayette Observer to take that picture off. That was about 20 years ago. So we're really out front, thank you. We're really out front. The other thing, the other thing going on, Bob, else is up in, I think it's Honey County, come out and be seen and be heard. He's one of our good friends. We're glad, we're very elated to see our Legislative Black Caucus, Marvin Lucas, Garland Pierce, and yes, Billy Richardson finally showed up. We're not gonna mention the other one. Okay, now, clearly understand, this is the 150th of Fayetteville State University's anniversary, second oldest university in the state. We want everybody in the country to come to our celebration. My time has run out. Thank you for the America experience, which is the greatest country in the world, and we're gonna show the rest of the country how to follow Fayetteville. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're now gonna go to the smooth bill with Keith Thompson, William Hodge, and Kim, you two. And we will be returning to a while with Ian Eisenberg, Tony Cattorno, Gina Cruz. That order, so, if I can roll it now. Hello, we're just staying still. Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize. We do best we can to coordinate with the outside. Switch.
North Carolina that neither other southern states don't have. And so, when we have a good process, we get good results for our democracy. So, in order to have good results for our democracy, we need fair maps. Fair maps is key to that. So let's look at the process that went into making these maps. We have, the maps were drawn by someone that was known for rigging systems across the nation. This, the process of making these maps was, said that they would discount or not consider race, which was the whole reason why the maps were unconstitutional in the first place. But yet, they would consider who had won in the past, and that would be a consideration for drawing the maps. And the last thing is, talking about this process of drawing these fair maps, we just got the maps just recently. I mean, we've known about this process for a while, and these were just given to us Friday and today, and a lot of the data we still don't have. So it's been a bad process, and when you have bad processes, you get bad results, right? So we already had a legislature that was elected by unconstitutional districts, so that's a bad process. But we're trying to get that process back. In order to do that, we need good processes. And so, I urge this legislature to do this for democracy. We're not talking about left or right here. We want the best results for North Carolina, and that means the best process in our democracy. So let's go back to the drawing board, get someone that everyone can agree on is a fair arbiter, and let's draw these maps so that we can get this competitive advantage that only democracy gives us.
My name is William Hodge, and I'm a 35-year Halifax County native. I didn't understand the need for a statewide public hearing on voter suppression issues, especially because we didn't have the appropriate data to study before we could come make our comments. I have some general comments today, but I will agree with the last speaker, bad process. The topic is not new. The nation's Supreme Court and our state court have ruled often about the use of race as an unacceptable parameter for establishing voter districts. The legislature has purposely dragged their feet for three-state election cycles where races, where race was used as an illegal factor in establishing voting districts. This resulted in a Republican veto-proof control of state government, and that's never a good situation. Why is race an issue? 2017, in 2012, nationwide, only 16 percent of African-Americans were registered Republicans, and only 6 percent voted for the Republican presidential candidate. This small percentage is shrinking daily, especially after the last two weeks of news from Charlottesville, Virginia. Race is an issue, especially in northeastern North Carolina. According to the 2013 census data, neighboring Verde County had the highest percentage of black population in North Carolina, 62 percent. Halifax County's 53 percent was the fifth highest. Seven counties in North Carolina were above 50 percent black population, all Halifax County neighbors. Contrarily, 34 mostly western counties had black populations under 10 percent, and 23 of these counties were under 5 percent. The Republicans used their legislative powers to diminish the majority-minority voting black population in eastern North Carolina by assigning black voters into as few voting districts as possible. From my perspective, other critical issues have been left unattended by the General Assembly. Eastern North Carolina has a history of underfunding and unperforming public education, a majority government responsibility. This has resulted in unacceptable academic performance in public schools in eastern North Carolina. Six of the, six of the bottom nine academic proficiency school districts are in Halifax and neighboring counties. Without sufficiently funded education, the area has been unable to recruit employees to represent textile jobs. Halifax County's 7 percent June unemployment rate was the fourth highest in the state. Neighboring counties experienced five highest jobless rates. North Carolina lawmakers' recklessly gerrymandering practices has led to cost litigation and put our state in the national spotlight. Our legislators must enact House Bill 200, which will establish a nonpartisan redistricting process. The bill has overwhelming public, public support with both red and blue legislative support. Thank you.
My name is Kim Inkoo, and I'm a retired neurosurgeon. I live in Rocky Mount, North Carolina, and Nash County, and I'm a member of the Rocky Mount Racial Justice Group. Last year, the redistricting plans have been judged to be illegal and legal and guilty of racial gerrymandering by the highest legal structure of the land, the US Supreme Court. You are tasked to redraw new district maps for public review by September the 1st in preparation for the 218 elections. First, I want to point out that releasing the maps and information on the redraw district map so late and so last minute on the day before public hearings is an act of disrespect to all the people of the state. We need time to study and respond to them. You're not giving us our due. This last-minute release maneuvers spex of dishonesty and secrecy, lack of openness, which is a disgraceful act for public officials, paid for with public dollars. Second, when I look at the new maps, I'm amazed by the contortions and variegated shapes of many areas. It looks like a collage and a distortion of reality. It's so twisted. It takes a lot of work and conscious thought to come up with such a map. The persons or persons involved must have some directed purpose for coming up with such a contorted picture. And not to mention getting paid with millions of high tax money and insult to injury indeed. It represents to me a culmination of the attempt by the current party in power to hold on to the power at expense of electoral freedom, and it is both racist and divisive. The North Carolina Legislature has already acquired quite a bit of notoriety for its electoral shenanigans. Some examples we have encountered at the last elections include limiting early voting times, changing voting places to be less accessible to people of color and poor people, voter ID requirement, and decreasing the number of places where new and unregistered voters can sign up. The electoral freedom of poor people and people of color keeps getting narrower and more hammed. Now you're dictating to us where to vote with this new map. Of course, it also impacts on who is running for that district, so we have few choices, less voices, and no power. Do not think that this, that we will just allow this without a fight. This country is already, already is an uproar over the many racist and divisive moves by the central government. Already, both black and white people of conscience are standing firm and standing together to beat this reactionary tide, like the event in Charlottesville and the recent events here to remove icons of oppression. I respectfully submit that you redraw your redistricting map to reflect the diversity of our people here and to not target minority people, people of color or poor people. It will grow far to reflect decency and some moral integrity among you guys.
Thank you. Welcome to the current address to Raleigh side here, and we're gonna increase the number of speakers at each side, four before going to the next speaker coming in, in the interest of the time that is gone. We'll also take us up to you to round people at the midpoint. At 6:30, we'll be closing the sign-up booth, so if you're not yet signed up, I'm making yourself out of that time here. We'll begin with Ian Furyd Eisenberg, who has come up, and you recognize him very well.
My name is Michael Eisenberg, resident of Raleigh. I had no intention of speaking today. I think everyone needs to listen to the population very thoughtful and healthy suggestions that he's given. And this is Representative Lewis, who will sign up in five minutes. He wants to listen to the public and working Democrats and fight against decisions of the court. At the meeting in August 2020 regarding the political data we fill on the maps, I knew I must speak up. Representative Wilson, he did not listen, or he was lying and made me a comment. These maps are, these maps are better worse than the ones that were drawn in 2011. Not as bad in regards to race, so I'll defer my opinion on that until I get Reverend Barker's comments. In regards to hardship in the spirit of public opinion, we're listening to the citizens' pleas. Our 50-50 state is not one, is not one we are gerrymandering on. The Republicans showed in the meeting to decide the, Republicans showed in the meeting to decide the criteria, they had no interest in looking at Democrats. When you voted unanimously to turn down sensible amendments they offered, you have once again shown your true colors. You do not care about the vast majority of the people in North Carolina. You don't care about their well-being because if you did, you would, you'd be for the health of the state's environment and the health of the people. If you said no to Medicaid expansion and yes to the heating law, you're a Tory mind with projects. You don't care about the children, or you would not be attempting to destroy the public education and serve the state so well. You don't care about women because you continuously attempted to pass laws to take away their healthcare. You don't care about the people of color because you have passed hunger suppression laws. You don't care about the poor, or you would not eliminate the Indian tax credit from the working woman. You do care about the wealthy because you did take, you did eliminate the state tax for women. We do know what we care about, is you continuously work on taxes that favor the wealthy and businesses by lowering the rate to the lowest we sell. You care about the wealthiest and the businesses as you continuously write about deregulation. There are the matters with the maps you draw. The people that call for fair maps, you turn your backs on them. Your ideas are morally bankrupt. Your ideas are morally bankrupt, and the people confirm that by electing right to protect. I was taught you don't hate the player, you hate the game. In this game, you must stay both, as the game is rigged and it's not rigged in favor. I heard a 19-year-old at one of these meetings eloquently telling you that his issue takes over this body, and that acts like these will never take place again. I will leave you the words of my father, who was so wrongfully said to me when I was a young man, and are guiding me through my life. One word from me, and you do exactly as you're told. So all I'm going to say is, I hope that if you cannot redraw these maps, the courts take these maps and throw them in the dust and where they belong. And, okay, I pay a special counsel to shame you.
Thank you. A few things from the other sides that we believe will help with this transition between sides. We're going to have to change the order, so after the three more speakers from Raleigh will go to Central Piedmont, then to Caldwell, then Guilford Tech, then Halifax, then Beaufort, then Fayetteville Tech. We also would make any change to the Nastal records by the Queen College. So we hope that the technical issue that we're addressing. Given that, we'll move on to our sixth speaker here, Raleigh, Tony Flotario.
Hi, my name is Tony Flotario. When my parents and I moved to North Carolina 11 years ago, we fell in love with a place we believed was the heart of the New South, a place of progress, where people valued education, equality, civil rights, racial and social justice, and a collaborative opening exchange of thoughts for the good of all the people. Sadly, we subsequently fear that we go to the hard-hitting, hat-field, and muckery where it was what one greater father did to another greater father 40 years ago. One political party felt entitled, because they came to crush the very soul of North Carolina and return to the ways of the old South with its implicit and if not explicit white supremacy. In the December special session, this view was confirmed as a vice, supermajority, immorally and unethically, getting even in more for their grandfathers, as they use phrases such as "it's constitutional," "it's legal," and "it's what you did before." But I never heard, I never heard, this will help the people, this will make our state better. I'm disgusted with both parties. North Carolina has evolved to a board of a fly scenario, with the supermajority picking on the rate at 1/2. I'm disgusted with gerrymandering and voter suppression that allows an ill-advised and immoral, skewed supermajority to exist, which schemed rules anyone and anything that stays in the way that they're specially dis supportive, whatever happened to the idea of public service for the public good. I assure many of you remember the movie Karate Kid. In the competition at the end of the movie, the evil sensei tells the student to deliver it in a lethal strike that injures the kid. When the kid meets the bully in the finals, the sensei once again tells the student to bully him, to unethically attack the kid's damaged leg. Ultimately, the kid wins against the bullies. In around the North Carolina Legislature, there's also a sensei named Stu Henchman, who created these godforsaken, immoral, and unethical maps. And the people in this room know who they are. But the people of North Carolina, especially the poor and the people of color, are like the Karate Kid. They will overcome illegal, unethical, and immoral legislative behaviors, even today, since these maps will only have competitive races in 17% of the districts. Their committee's choices similar. Do what is right, moral, and ethical for all of North Carolinians' people. Create fair and equitable voting districts, or face the inevitable turning of the tide and the historical ignominy. The choices here do not be a targeted version of the disgrace we sit in the White House, and always remember, all political power comes from the people.
To you, Grayson, recognize for a time, I'll pick same three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jeanne Trues. I'm a North Carolinian state director for Progressive Turnout Project. I'm also a concerned North Carolinian who lives here in Raleigh. Progressive Turnout Project has been working tirelessly to fight for fair maps for myself and my fellow North Carolinians. We deserve fair voting maps that are drawn by a nonpartisan redistricting commission. We deserve maps that are drawn without the use of any partisan voter data. We deserve maps that comply with the Voting Rights Act. We deserve maps that don't protect incumbents who won based on maps that were ruled racially gerrymandered. We deserve access to the map-drawing process. We deserve ample time to both review the maps and plan to attend these public comment periods. Four days is not sufficient time for new maps to be reviewed. It cuts the public out of the process. Holding these meetings at 4:00 p.m. on a Tuesday afternoon is unfair to the working-class families that you represent. Look at how many people are here and across the state with four days difference. Had we had ample time, we would have filled plenty more rooms, at least. We deserve representatives who actually represent North Carolinians. This committee needs to be better.
Metro Bacon, Bakur? You recognize for time, I'll pick same three minutes.
Good evening, Megan. Thank you so much for this opportunity to comment. My name is Mel Baker Bacon, and I've lived in Harvard for over 40 years. During that time, I regularly walk these halls, speaking to senators and representatives about environmental and health professions. These include making our schools, restaurants, and bars, and hospitals tobacco-free, of which I'm very proud. I never thought someday I'd return to ask for protection of the vote. We desperately need new, fair, and legal voting districts. I waited a year for new maps, and instead got them the day before this public hearing. That immediately tells me how much you value the public's input. I'm wondering how a group of leaders from 28 illegally drawn voting districts could possibly be charged with drawing the new maps. And I was shocked to hear that the same company that drew the illegal maps was rehired to draw the new maps. Your actions are stunning and immoral. It's inevitable. You're creating and solidifying your legacy. I am currently reading a book about the fight for the right to vote by African-American leaders returning from World War II. The top leaders, such as Mayor Evans, knew that they risked their lives in doing so, and too many were murdered fighting for this right. Instead of denying the right to vote, you're engaged in something also horrible. You vote tirelessly to make people's votes peopleless, while also making it harder to vote. This is your legacy. You're an equivalent of white supremacists. But I and millions of North Carolinians are paying attention. Some of us are here today to let you know, every day we can, to stop you from your ill-intended deeds. We see this as a vital issue, the keystone to democracy. I expect this will finally be decided by the courts. I attended the judicial hearing a few weeks ago of the U.S. District Court where this issue of the voting maps was discussed. I applaud the courts for their action of them. I conclude my comments by saying I have heard the former U.S. Attorney General Eric Holder state that North Carolina is the worst state in the nation, the worst, regarding gerrymandering. That may be okay for the current leadership of the General Assembly and the officials from the 28 officially illegally drawn voting districts, but it's not okay for the people of the state. I am not worn down, I am not discouraged. In my work in public health protections that you all benefit from, I learned basic proof. Where the greatest need is... Where the greatest need is found, where the greatest need is, the greatest cure can be found. That is my hope for you, me, your families, your grandchildren, is that one day soon, we will have the most fair and just voting districts for the good of the whole. May it be so, let's go.
Thank you. Thank you. We will now move for four speakers from Central Piedmont side, after four speakers will move to the Collins side.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Tricia Garcia. I live in Mecklenburg County, and I worked here for 28 years. I'm in a room with a max capacity of 70 people, for the largest population center of the state. This public forum platform is decreasing public input because of its inefficiency. Having microphones not muted at all of the sides while people are speaking, including the chair of the whole committee's mic not muted, is very frustrating for people who want to listen and actually get input. But I do thank you for the opportunity to speak. We appreciate the committee's work to produce maps to improve upon the current maps, but there's a long way to go, as we've heard a lot of people say. Real public participation requires time. Citizens have had only three days to look at the House map, and two days for the Senate, and just a day for the data. This severely limits the amount of time and has denied voters the real chance to have their say. Some of the committee's nine criteria, such as more compactness and less precinct splitting, were welcome improvements, while others have no place in drawing fair districts. For some criteria, the committee gave us yardsticks without numbers on them, making it impossible to measure the fairness. For example, the criteria called for splitting fewer precincts, but no data was provided on how or when to split a precinct. So what about the maps? The committee made the right choice in adopting county groupings that conformed to the North Carolina Constitution, producing a map that improves on the current one, even if that does not itself guarantee that the districts also comply. We also see some progress on compactness, with some better average scores than previous Senate maps. The House districts are less squiggly, but the new maps apparently don't score any better on all of the majors. This suggests that we are still falling short of fair districts. The promise to split fewer precincts came without a target, but we're glad to see that the new maps split far fewer precincts. The House map still splits 49, but there are a lot less than 394 split precincts in 2011. The committee attempted to avoid putting incumbents against each other. This criteria simply has no place in a fair process. Elections should be to protect voters' ability to have their say, not to protect incumbents. We haven't been able to assess how the use of political considerations and election results affected the maps, but misuse... I guess my time's up.
When I run for state legislature, I'm going to mandate that every microphone be lower to foot. My name is Barbara Blaiweiss. My name is Barbara Blaiweiss. I am the Fair Elections Chair for the League of Women Voters in Charlotte Mecklenburg. League was formed in 1920. That secured, it was part of a movement that secured the right to vote for women. The 100th anniversary of that movement is coming soon, and yet we still continue to fight for fair elections. I represent one of over 2,000 chapters of the League throughout the U.S., and one of 18 here in North Carolina. We educate voters on election processes and issues, including gerrymandering and how it rigs elections. Today, our fight continues to end gerrymandering and to reform the redistricting process to create fair maps. Our position on gerrymandering is well documented, and indeed, to a large extent, has been validated by the Supreme Court on June 5th, when they upheld the lower court's ruling that the existing district maps violated the constitutional rights of North Carolina voters. And at that time, new maps were ordered and due September 1st. Since that time, the League has watched legislators and continued to manipulate the process, and we were appalled. We received notice on 17 August to have public comments on 22 August on maps that we got on 19 and 20 August, using and creating maps that use criteria that the net effect of it is disenfranchisement of groups of voters, using partisanship as a veiled cover for race. The decision to limit time for response, as well as limiting room for seating, only underscores the fact that you may have no interest in what we have to say. The effort to be transparent is disingenuous. It erodes public trust in you and undermines the democratic process. These hearings lack the authenticity that we need and the accountability that we demand of elected officials. This isn't about Republican, it's not about Democrat, it's not about retribution for what happened in the past. It is about integrity and fairness to the voters, to we, the people. The good news is you have a chance to fix this. So on behalf of the League of Women Voters, we ask you, find a way to make maps fair, find a way that it will respect voter laws, and ensure that all our votes will count. Thank you.
Are we still working? Hi, I'm Dan Reddy. I'm a relative newcomer to North Carolina. Hi, I'm Dan Reddy. I'm a relative newcomer to the state. I've only been here about eight years, but I have grandchildren who are going to grow up here, and that brings me to this process, this arcane process of redistricting our state. Also, I was raised to have a belief that democracy is something sacred. I've never in my life, since the time I was eligible to vote, missed an election. The only time my vote might not have been counted was when I was on active duty and I don't think my absentee ballot got back on time. That's why I'm so appalled at what I've seen in the last few years, to try to steal the right to vote from people, their sacred right to vote, simply because they might not vote derived from the people and is instituted solely for the good of the whole. But over the last four years, most of our discourse has been about bathrooms, monuments, and campus speech codes, rather than about healthcare, schools, roads, and jobs. Most of this is due to the partisan nature of our politics, where 80% of districts of this state are safely held by one party or the other with no chance for competition. This puts the hands, the power, in the hands of the most extreme members of either party and pretty much disenfranchises 75% of our voters, because they don't participate in the primary process and don't have a legitimate choice in the general election. Please, please, let's try to end the partisanship in our state's politics. It's destroying this state. Thank you.
Well, now move to Caldwell for four speakers. First speaker I have on the list is Cope Johnson. I think transfer to Collins.
Lawrence, I'm a Republican. I was the, I worked on campaign staff with Jane King, Oh God, I'm a junior, approached the public cover since 1905. I later went on to become the youngest state special assistant to a governor in the history of the state, and that record has not been bloodbroken. I've examined the districts, at least our district, and I've been opinioned that our district is not gerrymandered whatsoever. Other districts may, I have not addressed them. I believe using as my source of information on state government, the Law and Use and Observant, which is a paper that is not favorable to the Republican Party at all, however...
Parties are guilty. I'm old, so I know it's most heartless. Only have, you must congratulate yourselves for having cleverly. You have manipulated the system. It is only a matter of time till the present minority party will exchange places with the majority party and play the payback game, and perhaps with avenges. Let's end that now. Let's resolve to pass a North Carolina constitutional amendment that reforms the process of redistricting so that it's fair for all citizens now and in the future. In order to accomplish such a change, what we need are legislators who are statesmen and not politicians. What we need are legislators who believe in equality and democracy. challenge of integrity, honesty, and fairness. What we need are legislators who reflect the moral code upon which our nation was built, and not politicians who applaud themselves for their clever exploitation. Yes, Democrats, I am giving you a tongue lash. And yes, Republicans, I am giving you a tongue lashing too. Don't make me have to come along and do it again. You taught me insulin unwicking wire when I taught government to my high school students. I told them that indeed, America is the shining city on the hill, that models for all nations and all... That each district shall have populations, equal populations. Two, the creation of districts shall protect racial and ethnic voting rights in accordance with Shaw versus Reno. Three, districts shall be compact. Four, districts shall follow established political boundaries such as cities and counties. Thank you. The overriding concept of promoting one person, one vote should and must be our vision. Thank you.
Excuse me, but please more air in this room.
We made a request.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Ross Holmes. I'm a student of mathematics, also a teacher of mathematics. And when I came in today, I got here with these pretty maps. Somebody had used eight crayons to color it. Now, if you know anything about mathematics, it should not take a crayon. She takes my hair. And there's no data behind this. I mean, I look at these and it's a pretty picture, but without data, there are meanings. Now, one person I heard say that some data came out today, that's nice. I looked right before it came and I couldn't find it. But I really would wish you guys would come into the 21st century. There's software out there, unbiased software. We don't need a biased consultant, Republican or Democrat. Software does this, no matter what state you're in, no matter what county you're in. Finish your days, get a degree. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the politics side, that these diverse proposals will be tolerated and the general will transition to insights that will be self-styled and process. We are now going to move on to Guilford text for four speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Representative Stevens here again. We had one more representative join us, Representative Manu Sprigans joined the facility, and I wanted to announce that. We are prepared with our four speakers. We have Michael Owens, Derek Smith, Betsy Rice, and Chanelle James.
I'd like to start by thanking the General Assembly for holding this forum. I don't envy the work you have ahead of you. My name is Michael Owens. I am honored to serve as the vice chair for the Southside County Republican Party. I'd also like to take a moment to thank the General Assembly for the work they've done over the last few years. They repaid roughly $3 billion to the federal government a year ahead of schedule. They increased teacher pay more than once, and they've established a rainy day fund with hundreds of millions of dollars to be used in the event of an emergency or natural disaster. They've done all of this while lowering personal and business income taxes, propelling North Carolina to one of the best states in the country to do business. In regards to the maps, whatever the outcome is of this process, there's going to be a lawsuit. You can take race into account, there's going to be a lawsuit. You cannot take race into account, there's going to be a lawsuit. I know it, and you know it. To accentuate that, there is someone in the room with me today who sued the state of voter ID. I doubt it's a coincidence that they're here today. I wonder if those organizations were included at all in this process? If not, why not? If for no other reason than to have them at least partially accountable for the outcome? And I'll link with this to those in the minority party who have talked so much about gerrymandering. I wonder if you've considered your district's gerrymander when you weren't in fact the majority party for well over a century? Thank you.
Good afternoon, North Carolina. My name is Derek Smith. I'm the Political Action Chair for the Greensboro Chapter of the NAACP. I'm also the Political Action Chair for State Conference of Chapters of the NAACP. And I stand here with my president, Reverend Curtis Brown, from the Greensboro Chapter of the NAACP. And I want to get right off the bat to this old deal about Mr. Thomas Hofelder. Let's think about these cases that we have to deal with here in order of that. The list is long. Dixon versus Bruchel. City of Greensboro versus Guilford County Board of Elections, Senator Wade. We've had to deal with Harris-Cooper case. The list is quite long, and of course, the famous Covington case with Supreme Court, ruled 9-0, even with Clarence Thomas on board, ruling that these are unconstitutionally constituted districts. Yet somehow, in their infinite wisdom, this General Assembly believes that it must continue to pay Thomas Hofelder to continue to do this to taxpayers of the state of North Carolina. So the message that they're sending is either they like what he's doing, or they're just rewarding incompetence. I believe they like what he's doing, because they can maintain power, keep the system all locked up in the legal process while they maintain power. So number one, Thomas Hofelder got to go. Number two, let's talk about race. One of the criteria that the General Assembly believes that it needs to shove down the throats is that it needs to take race completely off the table, as though there is no equal protection clause and as though there's no Voting Rights Act, Section 2. Because they got in trouble with race by packing black folks into specific districts to maintain their power illegally. Now they just want to do away with it, don't even consider race, as though the Voting Rights Act doesn't apply. We're not going to let them do it. And the third thing I want to talk about is, don't let this General Assembly hoodwink you into believing that incumbency is about incumbents. First of all, it is, in the fact that that's what they're trying to protect, which is not in the interest of anybody in the state of North Carolina. It's only in the interest of people who are incumbents. But here's the issue. The incumbency that they're protecting is illegal. It's been illegal since all these courts have ruled that it's illegal. So they're trying to protect... Oh, time is up, but you know what they're trying to protect. Don't let them do it, North Carolina.
But this is fine. I know it's going to give a big... Betsy Rice? And Chanelle James?
Hello, my name is Betsy Rice. I stand tired. I'm tired of voting my good favor or seeing on the news a new law passed that I disagree with. I'm tired of the legislature in Raleigh that passes laws that discriminate, and I'm tired of them passing them in the middle of the night. And I'm tired of the legislation that fights our governor and attorney general at every turn. These are the ugly calls, gerrymandering. And I'm also confused. Confused that our Republicans in Raleigh chose, thank God, to redraw the maps that were drawn long first time. I'm confused that they used my tax money to do $50,000. And I'm also confused why the Lily Party gets to choose to redraw the maps. That rule needs to go. So I propose to the good people of North Carolina that we appoint an independent council, chosen by the people to draw these maps. Use good code to draw them, so that people that live together, work together, and play together can choose who they want to represent them. Gerrymandering sounds a lot like gerrymandering to him. First, the whistlers, then snakes. I wonder why preacher moves out there this time? So I say no to the new maps. Draw them and make them fair.
Hello, my name is Chanelle Darlene James, and I am a citizen of Greensboro. I'm also a plaintiff in the Covington case, the federal lawsuit division, and three judge court invalidated 28 states, state houses, and state districts as unconstitutional racial gerrymanders. I'm here today to discuss my concerns about the criteria this committee is using to draw its proposed maps. First, your criteria is flawed because three of the committee's criteria use the 2011 plans as a starting point for measuring success, but these plans have been called unconstitutional racial gerrymanders. The proper benchmark to use would be the last constitutional plans, those that came before 2011 plans. Instead, the committee is officially tying its current maps to the unconstitutional maps, correct its criteria on compactness, split precincts, and incumbency protection. On election data, the committee's decision to allow drawing maps based on political considerations is simply a repeat of the process that followed to ensure partisan advantages when they redrawed congressional districts in 2016. This use of political power is improper. Data on incumbents' addresses and past election returns should be used only to ensure that the district do not unduly favor any party or individual while complying with federal laws not to ensure partisan outcomes. We believe this improper use of political data likely exposes the legislature for liability for partisan gerrymandering, just as with the remedial racial plans. Second, with respect to compactness, it seems plain to us, even having had the maps for such a small amount of time, that the legislature has prioritized incumbency protection over compactness. The North Carolina Supreme Court has explained that compliance with the state constitutional whole county provision of state districts must be compact. Incumbency protection, while perhaps an acceptable consideration applied evenly to incumbents of both parties, cannot supersede requirements of the state constitution. Thus, your failure to establish criteria that appropriately raise state constitutional criteria above other criteria is deeply problematic. Finally, this committee's decision to altogether ignore race is a problem, and it defies the direction of the court. The use of race in a district is not an all or nothing approach. Issues of race are nuanced, and not just in the district. The law reflects this as explained at length by the Covington Court, and as reiterated by this committee on some of your members, although they were ignored. This court instructed the General Assembly that a one-size-steps-all racial classification violates the Constitution and hurts voters, like me.
Thank you. I have four speakers. We'll move to Halifax, Speedy Hall, aside that's coming in, and for...
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We had Speaker number four, Janet Hoy, and Speaker number five, Richard Scranton. We'll draw her names. We'll start with Speaker number six, Ethan Braggton, and then move Speaker number seven, eight, and nine.
Thank you. My name is Ethan Braggton, and I live in Halifax. This is the first time that I have ever felt moved to come to any kind of a meeting like this, and it is because I feel the maps, the gerrymandered maps, are so bad. It is very important that people speak up when they see these things. I think the maps should be free from partisan politics, first of all. I think that they should comply with the Civil Rights Act. I think that the maps should be fair. Gerrymandering hurts all of us. We have to get rid of it now. I understand that politicians currently in power would like to stay in power. I understand that politicians want to win. You don't have to be scared. All you have to do is represent all of us. You can win if you represent all of us. Gerrymandering equals voter suppression. Don't do that.
Ms. Chairman, we also have, for the record, Senator Smith Ingram join us.
I'm Eva Platon, a former member of Congress. I speak today because I want to be on record, so all be clear, that the right to vote is the most precious right we have as Americans, and indeed, redistricting is one way to deny that. I, for one, know the value of redistricting. It was part of the challenge that indeed created the two congressional districts in North Carolina. This is no more than a sham. If the process is flawed, the product is flawed. And to the extent that this hearing is being called at the last minute, very limited information, to the extent we use the same system that created the illegal system in the very beginning, the audacity to think that the system would be so naive to think that you could do this to America. We are just coming from the whole celebration of the accident of Charlottesville. Indeed, we understand what it is to be American or not to be American, pushing on statues. Well, the statute that created the civil rights law is essential to be in America. So North Carolinian delegates, or members of the Senate, the General Assembly, or the House, to the extent that you say that all Americans indeed should be free, all Americans are equal, to the extent you say that and believe that, this redistricting plan has indeed to be redrawn. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Carolyn Ross Holmes, and I'm a resident of Warren County. My message to all of the legislators is simple. Candidates must be elected by the diverse groups that are located in jurisdictions. Candidates must be elected by the diverse groups that are located in jurisdictions. Gerrymandering is not necessary when candidates campaign and learn the people for which you represent in all shades and beliefs, abide by the law. I agree with many of the comments made earlier by my fellow citizens in this room. It's all about the process, such as including paying attention to the crowd in your respective rooms, to gain insight of those assembled here and noticing what they agree to or not. So in the spirit of ensuring our vote is not suppressed, neither shall our show of support for comments made that I think would be helpful in your report of public feelings by using sign language. I think that's what we've been reduced to do. This is another example of how one must seek and gain understanding of the people you are elected to serve.
I don't know how the rooms are set up in other places here. My name is Warren Heitzenrader. I'm a pastor at Jackson Baptist Church. I don't know how the other rooms are set up in other places that appears that people are talking to a crowd of people. Here, we speak to a camera, a wall, and three guys in suits. And I've certainly spoken to three guys in suits before when we had lower tenants on Sunday. So I'm gonna turn around, and I've got a timer going, so hopefully I won't go with the three minutes. I wonder, I'm not asking for a vote, but how well we're able to hear what's going on in other places. I've struggled to hear the comments going on. And it seems to me that people who have prepared things to say are being disrespected by the fact that their words get jumbled and messed up so that people across the state in what's supposed to be a public hearing are not able to be heard. It would appear that in the process of creating these districts, we have found another way to suppress people's voices. There are lots of ways to silence people's voices. One is to deny them the vote, which we have done this in this state. We have a long history of doing that, even after suffrage, even after the Voting Rights Act, even after two thousand and seventeen. We still find ways to do it. Another way to silence people is to place them in districts by drawing lines around and through counties and through neighborhoods. Another way to do it is to threaten people with expulsion if they choose to express their appreciation for a speaker, as the person before me has just said. Another way, which seems trivial by comparison, is to use technology and equipment that is inadequate to the task of spreading a public hearing across the public, across the state. And I realize it's a tiny thing. I'm no expert at doing this kind of thing, but I've been involved in webcasts before, and this is probably the worst one I've ever seen. I just, you know, I think there's glass fiber going all over the state between community colleges. I can't understand why it works this way. Why, if this is so important, are there such inadequate resources brought into play to accomplish or to fail to accomplish? The technology makes voices sound like Mr. Ed and Fred Munster and Mickey Mouse stuck down in a well. And that's disrespectful, and it disregards the importance of what's going on here. It seems like it's just another little tiny thing, just like another little tiny vote, just like another little percentage difference that it makes when you move a congressional line. But all these just things make things unjust. A man I know named Tex Sample once told, talked with us about the problem he had with his two sons who had a hard time sharing the task of mowing the lawn. The older one would always take the easy part, leaving the hard part for the younger one. Tex drew a map of the room, and he said, a map of the yard, and he said, the older one, said to the older one, divide the yard up any way you want. And said to the younger one, you pick which side you want to mow. I wish we could do voting that way.
At Bowford, I'm gonna give you a mic to hold, sort of a held mic, just hold it like this. First, I got Dave Wickersham.
Close enough.
Then I got Ray Leary, then Gerald Seigman, then Mary Jones.
My name is Dave Wickersham. I live at eight thirty-eight Sunshine Drive in Arapahoe, North Carolina. I am the chairman of the Republican Party of Pamlico County. My comments today specifically address Pamlico County. On February the eighth, eighteen hundred and seventy-two, the General Assembly of North Carolina ratified, quote, "an act to lay off and establish a new county by the name of Pamlico," end quote. This new county was made up of land from the existing counties of Craven and Bowford, and we have formed a close relationship with them over the last one hundred and forty-five years. A computer line drawn on a map does not recognize the people, their lives, or their daily activities. We are an inland county. We are not a coastal county. We are not connected in any way to the other counties in this proposed redistricting. Pamlico County is not contiguous to Dare, Hyde, or Currituck Counties. The only connection is a long drive through Bowford County via Washington or a tedious ferry ride. On the other hand, Craven and Carteret Counties are accessible by a four-lane highway or a very short, convenient, twenty-minute ferry ride. We do banking, air travel, car buying, shopping, and enjoy dining and entertainment in our neighboring counties. Our retired military are constantly commuting back and forth to Cherry Point. Our children take bus trips to the North Carolina Aquarium and other points of interest in our neighboring counties. The closest hospital and other much-needed medical services are only twenty-five miles away. There is a significant flow of people between our three counties. Our inland coastal location on the Neuse and Pamlico Rivers have resulted in very special state regulations that Dare, Hyde, and Currituck don't have. Of course, they have their own set of burdensome regulations to deal with. To be blunt, our modest population of thirteen thousand means the much larger counties to our north will mean that we simply will be lost in the shuffle. It is hard to imagine anyone elected in this proposed new district would spend much time with us, or more importantly, represent our needs and concerns in the legislature. I implore you to reconsider this alignment and leave Pamlico County with neighbors with whom we work, live, recreate, and worship as a community of shared interests. Please examine again not only your responsibility to comply with the court order, but your human responsibility of doing the right thing instead of just taking yet another political expedient action. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I can only hope and pray my words are heard. Please let us stay as we are with our neighbors and shared communities in Craven, Bowford, and Carteret. Because in the case of Pamlico County, as far as the redistricting goes, it is not fair, it is not contiguous, it is not more compact, and it is not respectful of community and shared interests. Thank you.
Hey, Ray Leary.
Good evening. My name is Ray Leary. I would like to talk with you in North Carolina. I'd here represent the citizens of the government of Bowford County. We do not understand why this committee, the citizens of Bowford County and North Carolina Senatorial District, have no commonality with both counties. Bowford County is approximately eight-something miles away in order that both counties are connected by this association. It's historically to the coast, and we're tied to their counties.
We have no volume. Turn it here. There's no broadcast channel. All we can hear is its voice, no, no, turn it up.
When it says it's on, I'll just hope well. We're not gonna hear it come back.
We have nothing in common with Vance, Norhampton, and Warren counties. We do not know why anyone would suggest this plan. It makes no sense. If there is a plausible explanation for this gerrymandering, we would certainly like to hear why that is from this committee. We do not need this, we do not want this, and we do not deserve to be shut out in Raleigh. Is it not sufficiently corrupt that Bowford County has to endure a limited voting for county representatives? And now this new senate district has a non-replication of representation in North Carolina's senate? The Redistricting Committee has been provided with acceptable modifications of new maps by the Bowford County Republican Party Executive Committee. The Bowford County Citizens' Government supports this provision and faithfully requests you correct us for other egregious redistricting claims. Such a change will actually better comply with the public criteria for redistricting and the current proposed maps. Thank you for allowing the citizens to provide you with these recommendations, and we sincerely hope you will honor not only our request, but others who have proposed the same modifications. Thank you very much.
Next is Gerald Seigman.
My name is Gerald Seigman. I'm a Bowford County resident. And I did not intend to come to this meeting. The more I thought about it, the more upset I am. Holding a meeting at four o'clock is not a public meeting because in Bowford County, we're a tier-one community, and a lot of the people that are working, they cannot afford to take off a half-day and lose those wages to come make comments. So I thought I would just come. If you look at Bowford County, fishing, crabbing, shrimping, that's what we do. We're a coastal community. And I look at the map and I see we have Vance, Warren, and North Hampton. They're landlocked. They don't have any water. So if we have political representation from someone that wins the election up in those counties, they have no clue what Bowford County does. We should be put back into the coastal community where the representation will have some knowledge of at least what we do in this county. Thank you.
Hey, Mary Jones.
My name is Mary Jones and I'm from Washington, D.C. And I don't like speaking in public. But just in the top of the power of neighborhoods and status have been so spread up and plural, these new districts are more compact than the current ones that we are now under. These districts respect our community and our shared interests with our neighbors. These districts respect the principles of confidentiality with means, which means being close, we're drawn together with all parts of each tissue being connected. It is this way for our county. It may not be so for somebody else. But I endorse these maps. They are less, you're not hiding than before.
Hey, back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I will announce we have, it looks like, about nine minutes. Any more individuals who wish to sign up and speak, that's fine. Sorry, the sign-up button. Now we move on to the panel's head.
It's Anna Blackburn, De'Andre Newsom, Leanne Hauck, and Roberta Waddell. That's four, and if they could, uh, Newsom wants to move on.
Good evening. I'm Anna Blackburn. I'm the state's Latino liaison for the North Carolina NAACP. Democracy is once again at stake because it is being stolen by an illegitimate General Assembly. This is not just my opinion, but that of the court system. The Supreme Court found the North Carolina white supermajority rigged the election by using racist gerrymandering to win their seats. I am personally tired about hearing that the Republicans gerrymandered as well. We are talking about the here and the now. Two roles don't make right. Here we go again, with all that in mind, and after being to zero of racist gerrymandering, you would think that at least a logical person would take steps to admit and attempt to remedy the situation honestly. But no, not our North Carolina supermajority. They turned around and hired the very consultant who drew the previous racist gerrymandered maps, and to add insult to injury, gave him a raise. Public records show that Mr. Hoffler has received fifty thousand of public funds to redraw the map once again. Yet, whenever we exercise our right to protest and rally, the rhetoric we hear from the supermajority is, the people elected us, they have spoken, stop your grinding. Well, I'm here to tell you, the people haven't spoken because you saw to that by rigging the maps. Which is exactly what you are attempting to once again do. The public, this public hearing, is a sham. And what a total disrespect to the people of North Carolina, the hard-witting voters of this state, that you behold seven hearings at this time when so many people cannot get here and call that you are honest leadership and trying to do the right thing by the people. It would be a bigger crisis to democracy if I would not stand up to the injustice that this General Assembly is trying to do by silence the people of the state of North Carolina. Adelante junto, ni un paso atrás. Forward together, not one step back.
Hello, my name is Resistance. And I am a resident of Cumberland County. And so I have a message to Chairman Lewis and also Vice Chairman Zoka. Stop insulting the intelligence of the residents of our great state. It is about time that you all become representatives of who you represent. It has been way too long that you think that this is the best that you can do. Are you serious? I am infuriated, disrespected, upset that this is why we're here today. And to think that, when you look at our Cumberland County, as it comes down to the House districts, that it's a conflict of interest as our highest chairman's district gets larger. If you look at the maps. The definition of insanity is to do the same thing over and over and over again and expect different results. So, the members of the redistricting committee, maybe you're a little insane. And it's time for you to come home.
My name is Leanne Hauck. I'm in Leanne Hauck County. I'm a relative newcomer to North Carolina, and I chose to stay here because I love this state. And the more that I learn about the antics of gerrymandering and voter suppression by the legislature, the more horrified I am. I would remind you that a core tenet of democracy is that a healthy democracy requires a principled opposition. A healthy democracy requires a principled opposition. Because the plurality and perspectives is how we progress as a society and support everyone, from the most privileged to the most vulnerable. The legislative supermajority has lost sight of this requirement of a principled opposition, doing everything that they can to stamp out any opposition. And so we have a sick democracy in our state that's infected with partisanship, disenfranchisement, and cruelty to those vulnerable people. These new maps show intent to protect the illegal supermajority. And so the sickness that infects our democracy will continue if this map is adopted. For us to heal our democracy, we must have a truly open process that allows voters to choose their representative and the partisan and racial gerrymandering now, so that our representatives truly represent all of us. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Roberta Waddell. I'm chair of the Cumberland County Democratic Party. Every legislative district in Cumberland has been redrawn. While the lines of the districts do appear to be more compact, While the lines of the districts do appear to be more compact, I have no data on the results of these changes. I don't know whether these districts help or hinder our party. They probably don't. I don't know if redistricts will meet Justice Department approval regarding racial distribution. I cannot determine if they are fair. I would very much like to comment on the proposed redistricting maps presented here today. However, the process has been so secret, and the hearings scheduled without sufficient time to evaluate them, it is very hard to do so. The reason we are so rushed at this time is because the legislators in charge have delayed redrawing all the districts as long as they could, and they have not allowed for public input. Courts have ruled that the current maps are gerrymandered with surgical precision. Considering that the new maps have been drawn under the same legislating direction and done by the same technical services, it seems likely that we've had a very similar outcome. I call for an independent commission to draw maps that allow fair representation for all, meaning that minorities would have a fair chance to be represented in the legislature, that the parties would be proportionally represented, and that there would be fewer safe districts for all. Thank you. I, oh, okay. I am Roberta Waddell, Chair of the Cumberland County Democratic Party.
Thank you. Did you, uh, the previous two speakers, someone's name was known, is not quite available in the past. Could you give me the name of the previous two speakers?
Mr. Chair, the second speaker was De'Andre Newsome of Vance, Carolina, and the third speaker was Lynn Howka of Cape Fear, Indivisible.
Thank you very much. We will now move on. We're going to go to, uh, we went in recent numbers because of each side, uh, because that does seem to exit slightly, um, and there wasn't a change, but we're coming back here to Raleigh. Um, we will begin with Rosalie Dominique, then Bolo Hares, then Rachel Lynch, Cory Williams, and Iyek Post. So, in that order, we'll begin with Rosalie Dominique.
I am Rosalie Dominique, and I think the message you've been hearing is very clear. We need an approach to redistricting that is transparent, acceptable to both the parties, and enduring. This is the only way to ensure a true democracy. Plus, if we have a long-term solution to drawing districts, we won't have the opportunity for our officials to spend all the time they need to spend and the funds that are available on education, healthcare, and infrastructure development to be distracted by the redistricting problem until it's truly solved in a nonpartisan way. So, the process used to draw those maps lacked transparency, and appears to have, once again, resulted in maps that are rigged in favor of one party or one party. But the citizens of North Carolina truly deserve better, and this is a problem you can hit. You have that power. It's one of the things that you can fix pretty easily. So, I hope that you will do the right thing. Thank you.
What was your recognize for town, or takes a few?
My name is Bolo Hares. I am also a student of the state of Oklahoma. I'm sure you guys all have some dreams. If your children miss the same year, you will regret it. If they did it again, you will regret it again, right? So, in this case, I'm not sure why we're going back to draw the same maps, and I'm not sure why you would expect people to encourage it, to say, "We did the same thing again." So I'm just asking, you know, be stubborn to your times and our times on unnecessary lawsuits, lawsuits because the justice has done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now, I'm to Rachel Lichek, uh, for a time very short, ten seconds. Is Rachel on here? Okay, moving on, Cory Williams. In order, recognizing Cory Williams for a time, I'll take six minutes.
Hi there. It helps you, I was number nine. I am home from House District Fifty-Six and District Twenty-Forty, and I brought my very expensive visual aids from yesterday. Uh, in November of last year, I had no idea what's in District One Hundred and or House District. I was on PTA, I was volunteering, but I wasn't really watching what was going on here. The special sessions turned out around for me, and I really didn't get the attention. I came down. Some of you recognized that I sit in your offices and talk to me, but I wanted to know what was going on in this state, and I wanted to find the dedicated civil servants who set aside their interests and serve for fourteen thousand dollars a year and do this, so clearly we care. And I've met some thoughtful, capable, dedicated North Carolinians. I've had lunch with you, and I respect you. I've also seen some of the most contemptible stunts, the likes of which would land these two guys in the naughty corner. This set of maps, naughty corner. I sat in the rooms for a courtroom and listened to Mr. Stark visiting, his very thin argument of not playing the books of process for partisan reasons, that you are instead dedicated to ensuring that public comments are retained under advisement, and these people clearly care and heard great comments from North Carolinians around the state. I'm glad to hear that you want public comment, and I'm hoping that this time, Mr. Hawke hears all of these public comments. So, we're out of the polls today. They will all refuse to come see you, so I'd like to know what I think. These maps don't just fail in efficiency gap tests, they fail the shovel test. And while I realize it's still legal, it's not ethical, it's not right, and it's not wrong for this world. We're all waiting for those thoughts and great poor decision, and we're all tired of that they did adverse argument. I don't let them do it, you guys shouldn't be for it. In terms of racial gerrymandering, when we see these maps on Saturday, it's not given the adequate chance to really assess whether a validity has been achieved here. But I'll tell you, as a black woman, I have listened over and over to protestations that the people, the members of this body are not racist. All I can say to you at this moment, no data, is that I hope that when we look hard at the work that's done, it will be that wanted, because moments will come to the battle box. We'll send everybody who is not providing a vote for the naughty corner. There are some sponsors who are committed. We saw House School Two Hundred, we saw Representatives Blust, um, computer redistricting people present session. This isn't, those are other relatives. This isn't really an issue of partisanship, it's an issue of constituency. We go home tonight, we look at your room, we tuck them in, we brush our teeth, and look at yourself in here, just like I'm going to. Ask yourself, "Do I feel good about this? Am I happy with these maps? Is this fair to the county?"
Iyek Poston, when you recognize for town, or you consider?
Hi, my name is Ayla Poston. I live here in Wood County. I'm speaking to you today as a North Carolinian and as the mother, wife, sister, and daughter of North Carolinians. At the beginning of this meeting today, if you guys can remember the fact that long ago, um, when your vote rate was like, uh, you asked for the most help and complied with the court order, and I am so happy for that. It was great to ask for help in the meeting. I always think it's helpful to go back and think about the basics, to remind ourselves of the basics. Why do we have voting districts in the county? It is so that people have a representative, someone to look out for them in the interest of their community when it comes to writing the laws and making the decisions that affect all of our everyday lives. I've already written to you and outlined the reasons that voting districts should be drawn with the purpose of ensuring that every person in North Carolina has a voice, every person in North Carolina has the opportunity to elect someone to represent them. They should not be drawn for making it easier for politicians to keep their jobs. I have heard a lot of reasons given for why the maps were drawn to a better outcome than the one, and also the new proposed ones. What I have not heard is anybody say they drew these maps because they thought it's in the best interest of North Carolinians to draw them this way. I have not heard one person involved in drawing maps say, "We drew them away because we thought that was what would ensure the best future for North Carolina." What I would really like to hear is if somebody involved in the drawing of the maps is for you to say, and then prove, follow through, and when you're making these decisions and drawing the maps, think about, I'll ask you one of these questions, two questions. Will this help the people of North Carolina? Number two, will this improve North Carolina's future? You guys asked for help and time with the court order. I would have to repeat that. So, if it's possible to incorporate things that reference, I think this Andy Fane guy who redistricted him, that their own map did a great job on, send your website. Anyone can download it. The only thing that's changed is there are now fewer protections for services and red house committees. I'd also like to mention the actual court issues, the kind of issues proof of the law and how you got here. It's not too late to do the right thing. Thank you.
Next we'll have Claudia Kons, and then Andrea George. I guess we have one more person. Claudia Kons, you're representing for town, you're not taking some privileges.
Thank you very much. My name is Claudia Kons, and I'm speaking as a citizen of North Carolina, worried about our state in a time of polarized politics. But I'm also here as a historian from your university. I'm a historian of Germany in the twentieth century, and I'm particularly interested in what happens when polarized party politics takes the place of national concern. Nonpartisan electoral maps are our first step towards restoring the trust that is the bedrock of democracy. That kind of trust is what we need here. I have to say, I have never done this before. I've never even come to a meeting like this, but I've been horrified by the amount of cynicism and apathy I feel among just people that are in trouble every year. So, let's step back from our situations, and then what can we learn from this? Ted Spence, Allison Miller destroyed democracy in nineteen thirty-three. That's wrong. German politicians killed off German democracy, starting in the late twenties, by putting their partisan political self-interests above the common good, even after the Great Depression, with one-third unemployment. Action was urgent. What did politicians do? Nothing. Major bills died, Walker, Quinn, wanted the majority. Five national elections in four years produced no workable coalitions, only more brimmed up. Humorists laughed. They said, "Politists look like a barbell," all the way at either end. But the outcome wasn't bad. The more politicians fought, the more rigid they became. A dangerous spiral ensued, voter cynicism, and blitzed the politicians' partisan rigid crew neck and neck. So, what's happening here today, I think Eva Clayton said this more eloquently than I can possibly say, but we have been waiting all summer for these maps, and now at eleven dollars, when it is too late, I suggest we need a fresh start. You need to ask for an incomplete. Take a bit, get rid of the deadline. Do not trust the firm that drew these maps. Pass Tusville Two Hundred. Point a panel of experts, mathematicians, geographers, and geologists to redraw nonpartisan districts. Make both sides equally uncapping. From a conspiracy perspective, I oppose this this far. Voter disgust can lead to anger. It can produce low turnouts and declining turnout. But disgust can also produce rage, a holy force to be considered by every legislator concerned to visit or reelection. Think of where we were yesterday, all of us at two forty-five in the afternoon. We all fell together watching the incredible eclipse. That's the kind of unity, unity, and together is my role, your role, and us, too, in our political life. Thank you.
Next up is Andrea George. Uh, you have recognized for town, or you don't take six minutes.
Hello, my name is Andrea George. And first of all, I just want to say, I'm, uh, thank you for the privilege of being in this community, and thank you for the privilege of being able to vote. And I just want to, I want to remind you that there are places in this world where people will walk for a week to vote. And making voting as easy as possible for everybody is, I can't see that as a priority. It's a privilege. It's a privilege that people die for, and we need to spend that. Secondly, I've heard a lot about division. As I've sat here, most of, I've heard a whole lot of division. I've heard one, once earlier, comment about the devil's tactics. The devil's tactics on division. And if we keep dividing ourselves by race, and color, and creed, division is, we is the division. We will never come together. Secondly, I'm pleased personally to see a map that's drawn without racial considerations, with no racial data. I am thrilled, because that's where we want to be. That's where our future, I'm hopeful for being founded. Uh, as far as I understand, policy voting rights maps, the communities are meticulous for the most part. I heard maybe one, one coastal community, I'm willing to know about that, but for the most part, the precincts and the, the, the districts are meticulous. And that's important, people living together, sharing on the data, maybe we will do that instead of dividing. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, members of the committee, as well as members of the public, uh, we're going to need to suspend for a few minutes, give our, uh, ask a question of our court order, give our females, uh, to catch a break, as we may say, uh, in this process. So, I recommend to suspend. Each of the voting carried sites, uh, will be able to have multiple court quarters compile one record that will be advised by four members of the committee in this process. We will then continue here in Raleigh, uh, with the list of speakers that we have. Uh, next up on the list, I have, um, I'll go through the list I have in front of me. William Smith, Gloria Hayley, I have an Octavia Rainey that has been a loom. Okay, Octavia Rainey, uh, then Susan, and running for position, uh, and Linda. Okay, begin with, uh, William Smith. I will just call him William Smith, we're ready now. Ten seconds, three minutes. Is William Smith here?
Just kind of hang on a second. We want to make sure that your voices are heard, so make sure they're recorded and taken care of. So, just kind of bear with me a second.
They will be informed, our words, and they will be transcribed and part of whatever goes to the court. So, that being said, Mr. Brown.
All right. Get us off of every one else. We're going to do it individually here now, recording. Okay? All right, is my recorder ready? We're ready. All right. Next on my list, I have Lloyd Jones. Mr. Jones? Let's see, let's get the mic over to you real quick.
He just told us, like, you're wearing a lapel mic.
Okay. Before you start, Mr. Jones, uh, Mr. Jones, before you start, I don't know if you heard, but each individual site is going to go ahead and record the responses or the comments tonight. So, all this will be in the record, so... So just feel free to say what you were going to say before this change. This will allow us to move along so you don't have to be here till midnight tonight. Okay? All right, Mr. Jones.
My name is Lloyd Jones Jr. My name is Cooper. I believe these maps comply with the Voting Rights Act. These maps strictly follow the hold county provision as allowed per law. I hope the courts will respect the constitutional role that legislators have in drafting district lines. The drawing of legislative district is the responsibility of the elected branches of government. I respectfully request that the courts refrain from changing redistricting laws and standards after the lines have been drawn. And President Trump won 76 of North Carolina 100 counties. You can't win the legislature while losing North Carolina's small and medium cities, as well as almost all of the rural areas. No maps can fix this for Democrats. Only better policies can. These maps are fire and lethal. Thank you.
All right. Next I have Carol Phelps from Washington County.
You ready for it? Thought you said the name through, you didn't.
You did. Go ahead, Phelps.
I'm from, wrestled a little down in Washington County. I spent 24 years in the Air Force and spent 22 years working for NC DOT. I'm retired now. Now, what I gave up to come here today, I gave up half a fishing trip with my brother this morning out on Alligator River. It wasn't a total loss because I caught a baby crab, two baby perch, a really nice bass that I couldn't keep because it was an inch too short, and a catfish that had been ashamed to put in the pan by itself. I hit the road and came on up here. I'd like to commend the panel that worked on these maps because now Washington County is one piece. My job as the chair was twice as hard when it was split down the middle. So I really appreciate that. I think you could have, as fair a job as you could putting it together. I know everybody's never going to be happy. There's so much that can be said and done, but there has to be a point where the line is drawn and we go forward. I hope nothing changes quickly that we have to go through this mess again because it causes a whole lot of hard feelings with everybody in every party. With that being said, my family reunion gets nasty because my cousin is the chairman of the Democratic Party in Washington County. So we stay on different sides of the front yard when the party starts. But I thank you for your time. Thank you for all the work that you do. And I'm proud to be a citizen of the state of North Carolina and the United States of America.
Thank you, gentlemen. Richard Friend. Okay, Richard.
I prefer not to hold the mic. If I can, can I flip it on my cup? Yes. Thank you. My name's Richard Friend. I live in New Bern, Craven County. In Covington versus the state of North Carolina, the U.S. District Court found that the North Carolina legislature had violated the U.S. Constitution by illegally drawing 28 districts. This has created a pretend or illegitimate democracy. The legislature continues in its pretend democracy today with these hearings. The concept of notice and opportunity is a well-established principle in law. A next one, example of that is North Carolina Statute 160A 364, which is the statute that controls notice for zoning changes. That statute requires two publications in a newspaper, general publication, in a period not less than 10 and not more than 25 days before the hearing. This hearing, the original notice on this hearing came out Friday. At least that was the first notice I received. And that was through the internet, not from the legislature, not from any public source, but from a private source. The maps were published then, at least one of them. The second one came out shortly after that. And the data supporting them, this 16-page document, I printed this out this morning. I was able to access it late last night, less than 24 hours before this hearing. I ask the U.S. District Court to reject this sham of a public hearing for lack of appropriate notice. The legislature seems to place the importance of zoning changes considerably higher than the voting, excuse me, voting rights requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Friend. Next I have C.F., I think it's Pittinger.
My name is Brett Pittinger. I'm from New Bern, North Carolina. The spirit of the federal gerrymandering ruling calls for a transparent and thorough effort representing all the voters in North Carolina. The joint redistricting committee had, at one point, the opportunity to use or utilize a nonpartisan approach, and they rejected it. Moving forward with their maps protecting gerrymandering and the incumbents largely elected by the gerrymandered process. If the legislature moves forward with these maps, which many of us think is what you're going to do, no matter how many of us are outraged, it is my hope that the three-member federal panel finds not only these maps, but your intent morally reprehensible, and removes this responsibility, this redistricting responsibility from the legislature and places it with a nonpartisan commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pittinger. Next I have Bill Roach.
I'm from Carteret County. But it looks like, we started out on this because our first effort to redistrict ended up in the Supreme Court. They thought we committed wrong. It cost us about $400, $500. And we're probably going to do the same thing. It's going to cost us more money. I hope at some point, if they have something where it says we can't give teachers a raise because we don't have enough money to budget, that the legislature will be ashamed of themselves. Or there's a rainy day sun shortage, or where we have a hurricane down here in Beaufort County. But a couple of thoughts that I heard today that I, they talked about, one guy said something about, well, the Democrats did it for years, and they did. And they did it for Jim Crow laws. They did it to suppress, for racial suppression for 100 years. They were wrong. The Republicans got into power. They've done it. The Supreme Court said, you tried to keep a certain group of people, make it harder for them to vote. The Supreme Court said it. It's not a matter of, it's not a nothing. So is another group in time, that your time to suppress a group who may or may not agree with your opinion, Democratic, Republican, liberal, conservative, you're a suppressionist. You're a supremist. And if you happen to be white, fill in the blank. So if you support it, now, I don't think all the majority parties are equal and did this, but if you support the system that's set up to do it, sorry, it's just, that's the way it is. I think this is the most important issue that we've got going right now. I think if we could resolve this one issue to where we had nonpartisan, we could have a bill in North Carolina, we could have, we could have this state improved for everyone. We'd have a conversation about what's right, about what we think is right. You wouldn't have to worry if you were, if you win your primary, all I have to do is outconservative or outliberal, whoever that is. I got to get to the left of Bernie or to the right of whoever, and then I'm going to win because I'm safe. Let's have a conversation. Figure out a way to make it a nonpartisan group. Some of the states are doing it. It's working for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Next I have Jody. Is it Lones?
Lones.
Lones, I'm sorry.
I'll be brief because I don't have a lot of space because frankly, I haven't had time to look at the maps. I'm a full-time taxpayer. I had something going on this weekend, and even though the legislature has known about this since June 5th, but really at the latest, I mean, here we sit before the deadline. We have a public hearing, trying to have everybody speak at once, and I just wanted to express how frustrated I am with this process and how it really hasn't given us an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Lones. Next Helen Robinson from Devon.
My name is Helen Robinson. I'm a voter in New Bern. I'm a taxpayer in New Bern. And I think I realized today that I'm an unhappy donor to the legal fund to pay for bad maps. The citizens of North Carolina have been given about 48 hours to review a proposal that was ordered months ago. We're now trying, with limited time and limited information available, to decide whether this proposal represents a good-faith effort to comply with the court and to respect the rights and needs of all voters. Gerrymandering has long been a tool of partisan politics. Democrats have used gerrymandering in North Carolina for years. So have Republicans. Republicans have now taken, in recent years, this practice to a whole new level. Sorry, but I believe that taxation without representation is wrong. We're trying to understand whether the Republicans in Raleigh have operated in good faith. It appears that they have simply used more invisible stitches to sew together this surgical procedure that they've done. The lack of time for review, the failure to provide adequate explanatory information, and the rehire of surgeon slash mapmaker Tom Hofeller are clear signs to me of continuing lack of good faith. The plan we have before us today seems to me like a weak imitation of a credible attempt to really cooperate with the direction of the court. It is not fair and it is not wise for politicians to draw their own districts. We should know that by now in North Carolina. Most North Carolinians, no matter what their political affiliation, are sick and tired of gerrymandering. I wonder when the politicians are going to hear that. We're sick and tired of it. We have learned the lesson, I think. It's time for an independent commission. An independent commission seems to be the only way in North Carolina that we're going to be able to achieve a more fair system.
Thank you, Ms. Rob. Next is Michael Schachter. Very good.
I'm going to announce. I'm going to spell. Okay, I'm Michael Schachter. I'm the first vice president of Craven County branch of the North Carolina NLP. And I lived in Craven County for about 40 years and I'm an unaffiliated voter. These hearings are a sham because the maps just came out and there was no time to have any analysis of their implications for the effects on black or other minority voters. It is unlikely that these maps could have been drawn fairly or justly because of the way they were done and who was in charge of the process. That is, the same people that were elected under the illegal, unconstitutional, and racially gerramanded district maps that the U.S. Supreme Court rejected and sent back to be withdrawn. These same people were once again in charge of drawing these maps. So it is very unlikely that much has changed with this discriminatory outcome of the districts. It is also, the entire project is in violation of the Voting Rights Act, which states that the voting power of black citizens should be, should not be diluted by any means. This would be in violation of the principle of one man, one person, one vote, in the true meaning of this, of the concept. The new voting districts should be drawn in a nonpartisan process, not in the manner to protect incumbents or members of any political party. They should provide all voters, and black voters in particular, with the opportunity to elect people of their choosing. The districts should be drawn to represent the voting power in proportion to the characteristics of the population of our state. And therefore, our representatives in government would truly represent the will of the people. We have, we have not had the time to analyze these maps, but it's extremely unlikely that these maps and districts will accomplish this goal. And that will mean that they are still in violation of the court's orders.
Thank you, Ms. Schachter. Next I have Jeffrey, is it Barr?
Barker.
Barker. Okay. I couldn't get the K out of here. I'm sorry.
Old man with left hand. Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Barker. I'm a relatively new resident of Beaufort County. Before coming to Beaufort County, I spent nearly 30 years being a lobbyist and then deeply involved observer and speaker with the legislature of another state. During that period, I was also the general counsel to the common cause of that state and co-authored a brief in the Supreme Court of that state by which we successfully sued the Senate of that state over redistricting issues in 1982. Redistricting and gerrymandering have been near and dear to my intellectual and emotional and political heart ever since. I was convinced when I relocated to North Carolina, 40 years after graduating from UNC, that things would be different here. But as I have written to many of my friends in that other state, it seems that North Carolina is having a race to the bottom with many of the other states, and they're darn near close to winning. And this particular process here is an absolute certain proof of that. There is something terribly, terribly wrong, members of the legislature and the General Assembly. When a party that receives just over 50% of the statewide vote can garner over 66% of the seats in the General Assembly, there is something terribly wrong with the districts that lead to such malapportionment and maldistricating. And the United States Supreme Court has agreed that the decisions that were made in 2011 were unconstitutional. And yet, as you've heard time and time again here today and from the other locations throughout the state, the legislature continues to turn a deaf ear to this problem and to press forward as if nothing had happened after dragging its feet so long that the process for us has been entirely great by virtue of the fact that we did not get these maps until less than five days ago, and we still have not had adequate access or time to review the data underlying these maps. Nonetheless, the opportunity to address the entire committee as opposed to two members whose appearance here today I appreciate, nonetheless, a personal appearance is a whole lot better than a dry transcript that's going to come out of this hearing. And I hope the legislature will recall that a functioning democratic republic And I hope the legislature will recall that a functioning democratic republic only functions properly when its elected officials realize that they are there at the choice of their constituents, not for the purpose of telling their constituents what they're supposed to believe. We don't ask legislators to do things, we inform them of our positions, and we have every right and expectation for them to responsibly respect and respond to our expectations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barker.
For this opportunity, I am really happy that you noticed that eastern North Carolina had no opportunity to put in its citizens' viewpoints on gerrymandering, and that finally we were given this opportunity at the very last minute. The Joint House and Senate Redistricting Committee passed criteria for drawing the maps. Most of the criteria did not reflect requests from the public at the previous input hearings, and were passed despite objections from the Democratic lawmakers. Will our input be taken into consideration from these hearings? The data and the files that were used to shape the new districts were only released late, late last night, so it was too late to conclude if the new redistricting, excuse me, redistricting included transparency, compact and continuous districts, the efficiency gap calculation, equal population, no racial or partisan gerrymandering. All these things must be considered. Using the same consultant that drew the original unconstitutional districts to help draw these changes will only result in similar embedded slanted influence. Use a nonpartisan process to redraw unconstitutional legislative districts. You should pass House Bill Two Hundred and reform redistricting measures that would take drawing maps out of the hands of politicians. I resent the process that occurred today that didn't allow me to share that with the other four meetings, so that other interested people around the state could light up their legislators and let them know about House Bill Two Hundred. I want everyone's vote to matter. Gerrymandering is wrong, it's time to fix the, these unconstitutional violations. Do the right thing and rise above partisanship. You must perceive, you must preserve democracy in North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. Next I have Sharon Evans with Democracy NC. Next I have Keith Kidwell, Chairman of Beaufort County, KOP.
I'll stand if it's all right, Chairman.
Okay.
I find it more difficult to speak when sitting for some reason. My name is Keith Kidwell, and I'm Beaufort County Republican Party Chairman, also the first vice chairman of the third congressional district for the Republican Party. I want to thank our legislature for their work on these maps, although I do have some disagreement with them. I also want to point out a couple of things that I've heard over and over here this evening from us, as well as on the, the other locations, and that is the use of the word democracy. People, we are not a democracy. Look at your historic documents, we are a republic. Benjamin Franklin was asked, when he left the, the writing of the Constitution, "Mr. Franklin, what have you given us?", and he stated, "A republic, if you can keep it, ma'am." Thomas Jefferson said, "A democracy is the most evil form of government contrived by man." I ask any of you who refer to us as a democracy to go back and read your history books, we are not. I also ask you to look up the word gerrymandering in the dictionary. It comes from a salamander-shaped voting district. I do not see but one salamander-shaped voting district. I see blocks, I see sections. I don't see gerrymandering on this map by and large. There is one, and that's the third congressional, the third senatorial district. With that said, Beaufort County has issues that are unique to coastal, water bearing, and our economic engines that we have in Beaufort County. We are not closely affiliated in any way, shape, or form with Warren or Vance County, or North Hampton County. That's why I take issue with the third senatorial district, it does not work well. If you have somebody who is, who is a representative, I don't care if they're Republican or Democrat, if they're from Beaufort County, how do they represent people in Vance County? How do they fairly understand those people's issues? Or if they're elected from Vance or Warren or North Hampton, how do they understand the issues we have, unique to here in Beaufort County, that deal with fishing, and hurricane, and wind insurance, and hail insurance? They don't understand that, there's no way you can ask one senator to represent people in a district that runs a hundred and sixty miles. It would take you nearly three hours to go from one end to the other. That is absolutely unacceptable. I spoke with Senator Hayes yesterday in reference to this, he indicated that this was the only way these maps could be drawn, based on what the court had said. Representative Speciale, I'll ask you today, I would like to meet again with Chairman Hines between now, Chairman of this committee, between now and then when these maps are finalized, because in twenty-four hours, Mr. Rader and I have come up with at least six other viable options, that would keep Beaufort County in a more centralized location, without true gerrymandering, because that's what we do have. With that said, I want to thank everybody for coming out here this evening. This is the American process, this is what we are supposed to do. But please remember, we are a republic, we are not a democracy. Come out, represent the people you speak for, do a good job, I love what you all have done tonight, thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Mr. Kidwell. Next I have Kim Buck.
He's gone.
Hood Richardson.
Gone.
Pam Woods.
Here.
Pam's from Craven County.
Good afternoon. I'm Pam Woods, I'm the President of Craven County Branch, NAACP. Today we've heard a lot, a lot of statements, and a lot of information, some of which I'm sure none of us had before, but we've been given information at the last minute for us to consider, not very good. I'm just gonna make a couple points, because most of the information has been passed. I see on these maps that counties that have totally different geographic, economic issues and interests have been grouped together. That doesn't make sense to me, and I'm sure if it doesn't make sense to me, with my level of understanding, it doesn't make sense to a lot of other people. We should have been working on this, or fixing this problem, a long time ago, and I truly don't believe that this was just done. I heard it said earlier, that they've known since June, I'm sure they did this, long before forty-eight hours ago. It was given to us forty-eight hours ago, because they wanted to wait till the last minute, and I don't think what we say or do is gonna really matter, but we have to say, we must let people know how we feel, or they will continue to do whatever they want and the way they want. I think it was totally disrespectful for us to be here at four PM in a room this small. It can't be a public meeting if the public can't get here. They can't get here, and they can't fit in here, and after being here an hour, they would have sweated and died in here. But that's just how I feel, because I'm hot all the time. So I think it was an open meeting, as was said earlier, but not a public meeting, a public hearing. And that's okay, because a lot of things were said, and I'm sure if there is a real transcript, somebody will read it. Using the same consultant to redraw the lines, I think was terrible. It's just the same as hiring a thief to dust the vault. Do you think everything's gonna be in there when you're done? You can't trust the results. It's just not good, and for us to believe that we, for them to believe that we trust the results, is not good. I think it's important that we read, we all read and pass, helped to pass, House Bill Two Hundred. It's a very informative bill, and it will enlighten anyone who reads it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Next I have, and I've, this name's tough one for me.
That's gotta be me. Alessandro Cajati.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity, thank you for the opportunity to utilize my constitutional right. As elected officials, you all took, among other things, an oath to withhold, excuse me, to uphold the Constitution and defend it. In twenty-eleven, legislation was promulgated and acted and passed, that was later deemed unconstitutional. Now, you have the gentleman who drew that up initially, that wonderful colored map, doing it again, with more money spent for him to do it. Whiskey, Tango, Foxtrot, are you thinking? Furthermore, with regards to this meeting, you've had at least six months, possibly a year, to come up with it. On Friday, it became knowledge that this meeting was gonna be held. Sunday, you released the map, yesterday, you released the backup data. Well, I'm sorry, but obviously, more people showed up than anybody anticipated. The fact that they showed up is great, the fact that this meeting is held three days before you're gonna vote on it, you have two days to review the testimony, or opinion statements of the public that you asked for. Like Mr. Sanderson, who has been conspicuously absent since before the break, I hope the rest of you do not turn your back on the statements made by the people here. And it is truly regrettable that we are unable to share our views with the other people at the other sites, as they have been able to hear ours. If this testimony is in fact written down, it should be read by each and every member of the committee, and I hope the three-judge panel that is looking over this reads it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Beth Bishak.
Buckshot, ever so close. I think Paul'd much worse.
Special microphone, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, uh, thank you for bearing with us and the public and giving us this opportunity to speak. I represent Pamlico County, North Carolina. My name is Beth Buckshot, I'm all, um, on the Chamber of Commerce Board, I'm the Secretary for that, and also past president, and I'm the Director of Economic Development for Pamlico County. Um, my boss, Tim Buck, was here a little while ago, he had to leave to attend another meeting, but I can tell you that our county commissioners passed a resolution opposing the House District. One of the reasons would be that is that we would lose our representative, who happens to be a Republican, which is Representative Speciale who's here today. So, um, if you look at this map, showing it to you, the big area in blue is the new House District for Pamlico County, and it looks like it's a contiguous area, but it's not. That big area blue is AfroPoe, because most of what you see there is water. There is no landmass connecting Pamlico County to Hyde, Dare, or Currituck Counties. So, that's just the opening on that. I have here with me a letter from the Pamlico County Chamber of Commerce Executive Board that I would like to read to you. It says, "Honorable sirs and madams, we thank you for taking the time to gather input from local towns, counties, individuals, and agencies that would be impacted by the proposed House District lines. This is a very important matter that impacts every citizen of the state of North Carolina. We request that due to the inadequacies listed below, that you reconsider the proposed redistricting plan, and leave our district as is, or at the very least, leave Pamlico County and a district like Craven County. We understand that the parameters you have been given to set new districts are extremely difficult to meet. However, we as citizens and businesses of Pamlico County, as well as many of our surrounding neighbors, have grave concerns regarding the current House redistricting proposal, and its impact on the historic economic, social, and civic well-being of our communities. If you move forward with this proposed district, which includes our county, there will be severe impact on small rural economically distressed communities, including minority communities in our county and surrounding counties. Many of these communities already lack adequate electoral voice, electoral voice due to the low population counts. They would, as a result of access issues created by this district, suffer the loss of what little representation and combined interagency and nonprofit resources they have available to them. In addition, contiguous counties within current districts have longstanding interagency agreements in place that affect shared workforce, kindergarten through twelfth, and community college education, social service agencies, economic development organizations, nonprofits, shelters for people, animal shelters, chambers of commerce, councils of government, and regional transportation. This is just to name a few. This new plan would decimate many of these collaborative efforts and detrimentally, detrimentally impact distressed populations by creating new barriers to access services. We recognize that those who drew the new districts do not understand the transportation demographics created by considering counties as contiguous that only have large bodies of water that touch, not land masses. The state map used by the House is a perfect example of this. It looks as if Pamlico and Hyde County are connected, but it does not show why. Thank you."
Thank you. Next I have RJ Hempe. Mr. Hempe? Patricia, I think it's Garrison?
Yeah.
Okay.
Patricia Garrison, Beaufort County. I had the opportunity to meet with one of the North Carolina senators, and they were explaining to me how the redistricting actually occurred. You'll be happy to know, we get to do this again in twenty-twenty. I wonder how many people will be happy to then. The redistricting occurred from the census. Number one, population. Population is number one in determining how the maps are drawn. You get a county, and that population is calculated. So all the one counties that get their population count calculated, they're number two, number one. Then you get two counties, then you get three counties, and it's all done according to population. So, when you get to smaller counties with a less dense population, you have to combine these counties. That's how it's done. Beaufort County, okay, will change in its senatorial district. I do agree with it. I would rather Beaufort County have stayed as it is, so that there are likenesses in economic, recreational, et cetera, where all be represented by our senator. That's one how it's drawn and supported by the population. I have sat here, and I have listened to people in the audience call people names, and insinuate that these people that drew these maps are not honorable people. I know some of these people personally, and they are honorable, and they have tried to do a good job, and they did not draw these maps according to racial bias. I'm proud to live in North Carolina. My family has lived in North Carolina ever since my ancestors came here from Germany a hundred years ago. I'm proud to be in North Carolina, I'm not ashamed of it. Do we have things to improve upon? We certainly do. A little history lesson. In twenty-twelve was the first time that the Republican Party became the supermajority in a hundred and fifty years. That's a history lesson.
Ms. Garrison, I think your time.
I think it's time that we come together and we try to have a conversation, and we respect each other in the conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Garrison. Next I have Noel Kayton. Next is Jim Cor. Okay, Jim?
Thank you. I'm Jim Cor, Craven County, I pastor of Freedom Baptist Church. I'm happy with my district, because it doesn't appear so much is going to change, but I do have several things I'd like to state. First of all, I agree with the gentleman from Beaufort County, and thank you so much, we live in a representative republic, not a democracy. With that being said, I'd like to address our legislators and say thank you. Thank you, number one, for this site that you, uh, provided for us, I know some have said, you know, complained about the size and whatnot, but otherwise, we would have had to drive all the way to Raleigh, so thank you. Also, thank you for drawing these maps, and while I don't agree with everything, I, I appreciate your effort and the maps. One thing that I, does concern me is Pamlico County, I'm not... shows 83, 24, 61, 51, and 91 have two representatives already in those districts, so somebody's going to get, not be there, and it appears as though some of these actually have two very strong conservatives in the same district, so I don't understand that, and I try to stick to facts, not feelings. Going back to the fact that we are a republic, I'd also like to address the courts and remind them that we do have three equal branches of government. It is the legislator's responsibility to determine law. It is their responsibility to determine the constitutionality, and I hope that they go back to the Constitution and not their political agenda when they determine the constitutionality of these maps. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Core. Next, I have Stephen Rader.
Stephen Rader, I'm Beaufort County Republican Party. First thing I'd like to do is to thank the legislature for the hard work they've done on putting these maps together. I know they've had a hard job because law has changed dramatically. In 2011, you had one set of laws where they had to include race and considered that very heavily, and now the courts have said you can't include race, so they've been bounced back and forth by these war dealers and black roads, and they've had a tough job. And we don't need any more of the court interference, power grabs of the legislature's power. We need to, they need to respect the separation of powers. Now, some people have mentioned these nonpartisan commissions. They sound good on paper, but the experience of California and Arizona shows that they often are, end up being more partisan in their mapmaking than legislators. So that's really not a good way to go. We're not focused, we're not going to yell. People talk about fair elections. Voter ID is the key to that. International best practice on fair elections, and we have, again, war dealers and black roads to block that in North Carolina. There's much good in these maps, but there are some things, particularly that we in Beaufort County are very concerned about, and that is our senate district. We're placed in a district that we have no chance of electing a senator, and a senator that's going to be responsive to the northern end of the district where all the population is, and can get elected without giving us duty squad in terms of time or consideration. That's not a good district to be in. For decades, under both Democrat and Republican redistricting, we have been in groups with the families on the coast. We have a lot in common with them. Now, one of the issues that's come out in all of this with these pods that were drawn is they say that, well, if you end up in a one-member pod, then we can't do anything. Those lines are sacrosanct. But if you're in a multi-member pod, there are all sorts of ways you can rejigger the lines. The problem here is the line between the first and third senatorial district, and we've put forward three proposals in a way that could be redrawn to combine communities and interests, to reduce the deviation in population, to equalize that better, and also to make them more compact, because one of these districts is now 11 counties. What's been done is put form over substance, and we think that by saying that it works one way for single-member pods and another way for multi-member pods is denying that is equal protection of the laws, and so we have to committee and, if necessary, the courts look at that.
Thank you, Mr. Rader. Patricia, did you put your, Garrison, did you put your name down twice by chance?
Uh, no.
Okay, well, then, very similar name. Help me here. It looks like a Patricia, and it looks like Garrison again.
No, I did not write my name twice.
Okay. Anybody with a name close to that that I may be messing up here? It's got VCR parts, it looks like, beside it.
Let me go.
Okay. Judy Merrick?
Julie.
Okay. Julie Merrick.
Thank you. My name is Julie Merrick. I'm from Hyde County. It's really hard to speak about the map that we've been given on such short notice. However, I believe that this map, and really any map that we did create under this, the current process, is unacceptable. It seems to me, as a resident in North Carolina, that the way that we draw our voting districts is fundamentally broken and has been for a long time. We in North Carolina have world-class institutions, our state university system, our community college systems, private colleges, universities, experts in our state government, in private citizen groups, and just among our citizens. We have demographers, legal scholars. We have ethicists, people who think and have thought long and hard about redistricting, and who have the skills to draw law-abiding, fair maps. All of these resources right here in our state, and yet, the members of the General Assembly are responsible for drawing our voting maps and this map, insist on using out-of-state consultants. They've created maps through less than transparent processes. They've ragged their feet, and here we are, mere days after a map has been released, having our public hearing. So why? Why are we ignoring our best people? Why are we ignoring the requests of so many people in this room and across the state of many of our representatives in the General Assembly, that we change the way that we do this redistricting? We've moved to a better system. Why are we allowing representatives elected by and who vote on discriminatory maps? Try again, again. Try again. I ask these questions, but I feel most of us know why. It's not that the people that drew these maps are worried that the people living in North Carolina, be it by a bipartisan commission, cannot draw a fair map, but they're worried that they can. And they're afraid of that map, and they're afraid of that map because that map would not allow them, as Representative DeGulis said, gaining partisan advantage. And that's the goal of this map, possibly. We don't know. We haven't had time to look at it, right? But that's the goal of, that has been the goal, of the way that they've drawn these maps. And that's not serving us. That's not creating a map that represents us well. And so I say just go back to the drawing board, consider carefully your ethical and moral obligations to us, people in North Carolina, fix the process, and then give us a good map. And then we'll come back here and we can talk about that map. I'd love to. But we can't do that until we fix the process. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merrick. Next, I have John Haywood.
First, I want to thank William Barber for streaming this live on Facebook, or I would have missed more than half the hearing. I know he's not here, but at least we'll be in the record there. Most of what I've heard tonight about problems with the process, I agree with, and I want to reiterate that a hearing three days after the maps have been released and a day after the data is released is just ridiculous, and we really need to improve on this process and come up with something that's fair. There's not much left to say that hasn't been said, but I would also like to make the point that these maps, just like previous maps, seem to be symptomatic of a larger problem. Our democracy, I think, is in the process of breaking down. And I think if we let this happen, the future will not judge us kindly at all. Now, I truly believe that all members of the legislature are doing what they believe is best for our state, but I really think they need to think about what, how the process works, and is it fair? I know we're in a republic, but our republic should be representative of the voters, and right now, with the maps we have, it will not be representative of the voters. Finally, these maps are going to also, the problem, everybody knows the problem with them is they favor extremism over moderation, and I think moderation is what we all need, not more extremism. I hate to sound cynical, but after just observing this, I have the feeling that the majority party who's been drawing these maps has just been doing the bare minimum, and I think they're trying to draw this out as long as possible, and they're going to try and keep this in the courts through 2018 and possible, possibly 2020. At this point, I think probably our best hope is that the courts throw these maps out. And that's not all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. That's all I have on the list. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, if not, I just want to thank all of y'all for coming this afternoon. I know, I know it's been a long afternoon, most of you, but we appreciate this input. This is, this is not an easy job, as easy as you may think, I promise. And the input that you've given us, we're going to take back, and I promise, we'll take a look at this input, and again, I just want to thank you for being here and sharing your ideas on what we need to do.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.